I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, we have a quick announcement this evening. Remote public comment is available this evening. The Santa Cruz County Health Services Agency has recommended that gatherings of large groups be postponed in order to slow the spread of the coronavirus. To still allow for participation, public comment can be emailed to council for their attention during tonight's meeting. Of course, we will also offer the normal public comment option this evening. If you wish to provide a remote public comment, you can send your comments via email to publiccomment@ci.capitola.ca.us. Please identify the item you wish to comment on in your email subject line. Emailed comments will only be accepted for general government and public hearing items. Emailed comments will not be accepted for non-agendized items. Emailed comments on each general government and public hearing item will be accepted after the start of the meeting, but before I announce that public comment for that item is closed. Each emailed comment will be read aloud for up to three minutes or displayed on a screen. Emails received by the email address publiccomment@ci.capitola.ca.us outside of the comment period outlined will not be included in the record. Moving forward tonight, we did not have a closed session, so I assume there is no report on closed session?
That's correct.
Wonderful. Any additional materials?
We do have two items of additional material, item 8A and item 8B, and a few extra comments after I receive the official additional materials. Thank you.
There was actually numerous public comments that were received, and they are distributed on your desk there, and there's copies at the back of the room.
Great. Wonderful, thank you. Are there any additions or deletions to this evening's agenda?
So staff has several changes proposed for tonight's agenda. The first is to remove the proclamations from tonight's agenda. Those have been removed as they're not essential items, and at this point, following guidance from this state of California and the local health agency to minimize gatherings, we minimize attendees at gatherings, we remove them from the agenda. In addition, staff is recommending pulling item 8A from consent to be heard as a public hearing.
Can you clarify, 7 is our consent, if I'm reading the agenda correctly? So is it 7A that you're looking to have pulled from consent?
It's the update on the emergency storm drain repairs.
Okay, so 7A. So staff is recommending that be pulled as a general government item?
Yes.
Okay. Do we need a vote to do that? No? So we can just indicate that item 7A from consent calendar will now be item 8F?
Yes, and when you vote on consent, you'll just do it without that item.
Okay. I feel like we're getting some feedback in the room. Councilmember Botorff, might you mute your phone? Is that it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'm here. You want to mute my phone?
We're getting some feedback, and we thought that perhaps it was from your line. We'll try muting your phone, and if that's not it, we'll keep searching. Great, thank you. We're going to move on to public comments. Tonight, public comment is for members of the public to address the city council on any item that is not on tonight's agenda. Oral communications allows up to three minutes per speaker, and of course, now would be the time to address the council if anyone would wish to do so, on any item not on tonight's agenda. Yes, hi, welcome.
Hi, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council members and staff. Let's see over here. My name is Raquel White from Fresno, California, and I am the Central Regional Compliance Manager for Construction Industry Force Account Council, also known as CFAC. CFAC is a construction industry organization dedicated to California's public contract code compliance and education. We do not represent specific contractors, but rather advocate on their behalf, excuse me, rather advocate on the behalf of the construction industry. We promote competitive bidding, fair bidding opportunities, proper use of force account, and awarding of public contracts. We do this by monitoring public agencies to ensure they are bidding public works projects over a certain bidding threshold. Although we represent the construction industry, we can also be a resource to agencies when they may have questions about bid splitting, change orders, advertising, new construction or maintenance, and the use of force account. CFAC also encourages agencies to become signatory to the California Uniform Construction Cost Accounting Act, which is one of the reasons why I'm here this evening. The City of Capitola adopted a resolution to become signatory to the act back in July 2012. As of today, the State Controller's Office has not received a resolution from the city to become a participating member. The governing board must notify the State Controller's Office in writing of the election to become subject to the Uniform Construction Cost Accounting procedures. Until the approved resolution is received by the State Controller's Office, the city must legally abide by the $5,000 bidding threshold per PCC 20162 for public contracts. I have provided my business card to the city clerk to distribute to the mayor, council members and staff. Please, sorry, please feel free to contact me if you have any questions in regards to this, and thank you for your time. I would also just quickly like to ask if item 7B, the emergency declaration for the Wharf project, be pulled for further discussion? And that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Staff, can we get guidance because the consent, oh, we're not at consent calendar yet, we'll get to that when we get there then, thank you. Any further public comment? Okay. Seeing none, we're going to move on to city council and staff comments, and we will start with our staff members. Is there any comment from our staff this evening?
I think there's two things I'd like to do this evening. The first is, I want to acknowledge our city clerk. This is going to be her last meeting tonight. I want to thank her for everything she's done in the city. On behalf of the city council and staff, I wanted to present you with these flowers.
As you all know, this was not a decision that I made without outside interference in the way of a couple hospitalizations, and it has been an honor and a privilege to work with the City of Capitola. Government is a service industry. It is about the people who work in it and serve it as much as it is about our beautiful beaches and our malls and everything else. So I have been proud to be a part of that, and I wish the best of luck on going. I'm looking forward to having the time and energy to come back and visit everyone, and I'll still be in the community. Thank you again for this wonderful opportunity.
Thank you.
In addition, I would also just like to take a quick moment to, I'm going to break with our sort of standard practice, and I have a couple slides that I prepared very quickly to just brief the city council and the community on the city's coronavirus planning efforts. First, I just want to reiterate something that I've mentioned in the past, and I'll say again this evening, is that the City of Capitola is not a public health agency. That's our public health agency is the Health Services Agency for the County of Santa Cruz. So we are following their guidance and guidance issued by the state in terms of a response to the coronavirus crisis. As you may likely know, there are four confirmed cases of the virus in the county. There are also a relatively small number of case contacts and travelers who are being monitored, quarantined at this point to see if they develop symptoms. The guidance, the key guidance that we've been following was issued by Santa Cruz County Health Services Agency on March 9th. It is intended to be in place through March 22nd. It may be updated down the road. And the city will be following the guidance to the extent that it's applicable or reasonable or figuring out the best way to apply the guidance to the City of Capitola. There's five key messages in that guidance. The first one is about social distancing. Really what social distancing is about is avoiding large gatherings, minimizing unnecessary exposure to other individuals who may have the virus, and following proper hygiene principles. We'll talk about what the city has done in some of these regards as we get into the next slide. The second is vulnerable prevention and preparedness, as with any emergency. The Health Service Agency is advising everyone to develop a plan for themselves and their families in order to prepare for the coronavirus. The third point is about vulnerable populations. Based on the evidence so far, it appears that those over the age of 60 and people who suffer from underlying respiratory conditions are at more danger from the coronavirus, and they need to exert additional precautions. Workplace actions, follow the direction in your workplace to help keep you and other employees safe, and please, please, if you're sick, stay home. The city has been developing our internal response to our operations over the last several weeks. This is not an all-inclusive list, but I want to give people a little bit of a feeling for what we're working on internally. We've expanded our communication both internal within the city, with city employees, about protocols, practice. We've also been using our social media and our website to help push out Health Service Agency information as it becomes available. We conducted staff training here the other day that was led by central fire staff to help train people about infectious diseases and how to maintain safe distance and stay safe. We've enhanced facility cleaning and definitely encouraging hygiene protocols. That includes, as you'll notice, hand sanitizer dispensers at numerous locations and city facilities. We've established, as we mentioned for this evening, remote testimony for this evening. This will be the first time we've tried this, so we'll see how it goes. We have reduced all-out, nonessential, out-of-county, or really any work-related travel. We've posted visual alerts at all entrances for city facilities. We canceled all non-city meetings at City Hall. Our indoor recreation classes have been canceled through the 22nd. We have not canceled yet our youth programs or outdoor classes. Our museum, we're not going to be opening it up, it'll be staying closed, and we've postponed the grand opening. The Battle of the Bands, which was a recreation event that was planned for the near term, has been postponed at this point, and we've notified our special event permittees that the city will be following the guidance from the state or the county about large gatherings. And that guidance may or may not, may come relatively late in the process, and so we encourage encouraging all the event coordinators to figure out what their plan and their deadlines would be in terms of if they needed to cancel or postpone the events. So that's just a quick summary of what we've been working on here in the last couple weeks. And I think in addition, our city attorney has an update as well.
Thank you. I just wanted to add that, as you'll note, a council member is attending the meeting remotely. That's possible due to some changes that the governor made to the Brown Act this morning. He issued an order suspending certain portions of the Brown Act regarding public meetings for local and state agencies. One of those provisions now allows council members and the public to attend meetings remotely. So I'll be working with staff regarding any additional changes that might work for the City of Capitola.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that was staff comments. Any comments from council members? Comments from council members?
No comments.
Nope. Councilmember Botorff?
No comments.
Okay. Councilmember Bertrand, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I think this is going to be very hard for a lot of people, changing a lot of our habits, and in particular, it was very hard for me because a dear friend of the family that knew my parents, and I've grown up with her kids. She's almost going to be 100 years old, and all I could do is talk with her right now. And at her time in her life, it's very important for her to see friends that she's known for, in my case, 70 years, right? She was there, my name's on the crib that she shared with all her kids. My kid, my sister, excuse me, yeah, my sister. We have the name on the same crib, it's a family custom. So it's going to be really hard for a lot of us, and you know, I want to recognize that, that we're all going to have to sustain this. So the reason why I'm bringing this up is, a lot of people are going to feel isolated, especially if they feel like they're the vulnerable population. And you know, I've already been reading things online where people, in that case, are thinking, people are just going to ignore us, and we're expendable. So reach out to your older relatives, reach out to people who are in your community who are older and may feel that way. I think it's going to be very important for them to know that people still care. Thank you.
Thank you. I would also just like to make a brief comment. We had originally planned for a presentation tonight in honor of it being Red Cross Month. And unfortunately, because of our following the guidelines of public health and safety now, we were unable to do that this evening. But I would also like to acknowledge that March is Red Cross Month, and to thank all of the hardworking employees and volunteers of the Red Cross for all that they do to serve our community here and throughout the country. So thank you very much to any of you who are listening. Any further comments? Nope, seeing none, we will move on. Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, forgive me.
Yeah, I would like to bring forward to see if we can possibly look at declaring an emergency declaration for the City of Capitola at this point. Several other jurisdictions in our county have done so, including the county, and I feel like at this point in time, this might be a benefit to our city. Do you have any feedback for us at this point, regarding that?
We do. So if the council is interested in doing so, we would need to add an item to the agenda tonight under a provision of the government code that allows us to add emergency items to the agenda, and that would take a majority vote by the council. And then, once we get it on your agenda tonight, we could discuss what the declaration would look like.
Okay, so my understanding is that we then would need a motion and a second to vote to put this on the agenda, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
So my recommendation would be, I think you're in council member, my recommendation would be that you finish council member comments. Once you get to the conduct of business, you vote to put it on. Have we already finished?
Where do you put it?
Oh, well, we could, it doesn't matter. We could put it after, probably after consent.
After, so once we begin the general government item 8, then we would vote to add an additional item to the agenda, correct?
That seems to make the most sense. If a council member feels strongly differently, that's probably fine, too.
Okay. Okay, we will come back to that then. In that case, we are moving on to the consent calendar. Item 7A has been recommended by staff to move to our general government and public hearings. We had a request from the member of the public to move item 7B to separate consideration, which would also move it to general government and public hearings. Do we need any further motion from the council to do so? No? Okay, so then that will now become, so item 7A became item 8F. Item 7B will now become item 8G. With that, there are no further items on the consent calendar, so we'll move forward into general government and public hearings. And so now would be the time where we would consider, yes, is it seeking?
I'm just nodding.
Okay, okay. Seeking guidance from our city attorney, it's an unusual meeting this evening, so. We are at item 8 then, general government and public hearings. Now would be the time for us to consider a motion for adding another item to our agenda this evening for an emergency declaration related to the COVID-19 coronavirus.
That's correct.
So I'll make a motion for the city council to declare a local health emergency regarding the noble coronavirus, COVID-19, which will empower the city to respond effectively to COVID-19, seek and utilize mutual aid, potentially obtain reimbursement, and ensure that the city staff have all the necessary tools and powers at their disposal to slow the spread of the coronavirus outbreak.
So to confirm, the motion is, right now is just whether or not we're going to put it on the agenda to vote on tonight?
Did I hear that you wanted me to add those other things as well, what should be in it? Do you want me to include that in the whole motion?
I think what you should do now is there should be a motion to add an emergency item to the agenda, and the reason that you would like to add it to the agenda is because the coronavirus is an emergency situation, because it severely impairs public health and safety. And so the motion would be to add an item discussing whether or not the city should declare a local emergency due to the coronavirus. And then if that is seconded, then we vote on that, put it on the agenda, and then we can discuss the contents of the declaration.
I assume move the city attorney's motion.
Perfect.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Because we do have a member voting remotely, I would recommend that a roll call vote may be appropriate. Okay, let's go ahead with the roll call vote on the motion to add an item to our general government section of tonight's agenda.
Councilmembers Story?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Bertrand?
Aye.
Botorff?
Aye.
And Mayor Peterson?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously, thank you. We'll now move forward with general government, item 8A, considering a new general special event permit for women on waves. Do we have a staff report?
Good evening, Chief.
Good evening. Mayor Peterson, council members. Terry McManus, Chief of Police here in Capitola. Before you this evening, seeking council direction to approve or deny a general special event permit for the Women on Waves Surf and Swim Contest, tentatively scheduled for October 10th of this year, 2020. Before I get into the presentation, just a note, you'll find in your application there before you that one of the items on page five was not properly checked from the event organizer, and that was whether or not the organizer was going to request an ABC permit. This is a non-alcohol event. We made contact with the organizer earlier today, and understood from the beginning that it is not, they were not requesting an ABC permit. It's a non-alcoholic event, so I wanted to make that note. And then also remind you that on the back of that package, on the last page, is a map of the event that you can refer to as a reference during the presentation. So a little bit about the background of the Women on Wave.
Excuse me, Chief?
Yes, ma'am.
I didn't see the, we didn't get that in our pocket, unfortunately, the last page. Oh, I didn't get one.
It should be right in front of you.
Oh, up here, as a handout?
Yes, this one. Yeah, it's not in the agenda.
I see, thank you. Great, thank you.
The Women on Waves Surf Contest have been held here in Capitola since 1997, so just about 20 years. With the exception of 2019, and I'll talk about that further in just a moment. It's a community-driven contest that highlight and celebrate female athletes and surfers while raising money in support of women-focused nonprofits in the county. Local business owner Alana Zanville is the organizer for the 2020 event, and it might be that she has organized previous events, I'm not quite sure, but she is in fact the organizer for what is potentially an upcoming 2020 general special event permit. She might be here in the audience, I didn't, welcome. Continue, and this is a reminder for most, but our special events are divided into two categories. A general special event permit is an event that has more than 200 attendees and known or expected impact on city services. Those general special event permits require council direction or council approval to go forward with that permit, which is why we're here this evening on this one. Minor special event permits are those events that have less than 200 with minimal impact on services, and those special event permits, the minors, can be approved by our city manager as we do each year. Currently, the city issues 11 general special event permits on an annual basis and 35 minor special event permits. Regarding the history of the Women on Waves, I touched on a few things. Since 1997, they drew crowds that were under 200 participants and spectators, thus requiring only a minor special event permit. The 2018 event, for many reasons, including the surf conditions, the beautiful weather, and the popularity of their event, that drew much larger crowds. And the vendor type and the size, the total number of vendors at the event, generated unanticipated impact on services and several complaints to staff. Now, it's worth me mentioning that none of those complaints came directly into the police department as calls for service. Some of you might remember that as a result of the growing event from back in 2018, during my annual special event review of all of the events, general and during my annual special event, uh, review of all of the events, general and minor, within the city of Capitola, uh, presenting to council, direction was provided to me that the women on waves event would not be authorized as a minor special event permit any longer because of the size of the event, and organizers need to apply for a new general special event permit, which would come before council for your discretion and consideration of issuance of that permit, why we're here tonight. Feedback was provided to the event organizers at the time, and they decided to take the year off 2019 and not have an event while preparing for 2020, uh, and the event that they hope that goes forward in, uh, in October of this year. With regard to discussion specific to this event and this permit, uh, it's a general special event permit, it's, um, the request is for a one-day event on October 10th, as I mentioned, from 7:30 in the morning until 5:30 in the evening. The anticipated attendance is about 350 to 400 participants and spectators. Vendor concession tents, you can look at your map here if you'd like to. Uh, they'll be located on Esplanade Park with a couple, uh, of tents on the beach along the seawall. Those vendors are limited to selling apparel, arts, arts and crafts, jewelry, they are not permitted to sell food or beverages. However, snacks and coffee will be provided by the organizer and the volunteer staff to the participants of the event. Participants and attendees will use available city parking. There are no road closures as part of this, um, request for a special event. There is a request for a bandstand permit for live music, uh, I'm led to believe Hawaiian-type music utilized in the bandstand, and that music, um, if permitted, will occur between 11:00 AM and 5:00 PM on the day of the event, October 10th. Event volunteers, um, will staff the venue and the utilization of off-duty local, uh, off-duty lifeguards, uh, to provide for the safety requirements while the, uh, participants are on the water and spectators are, are, um, uh, watching the event. With regard to fiscal impact, there's none. As you're well aware, these events, uh, the, uh, um, fiscal impact, it's recovered through event operator fees and reimbursement of staff time associated with the event. I might add that one of the boxes that might not have been checked in the application, it was checked, but the formatting of the application, and I'll get to the page here in a minute, uh, the box is checked no, that they are not requiring city services, but it's, the, the word no is lined up in the sentence below, and it might suggest that they're checking the yes box. In fact, that box, if you can find it, uh, is checking no, they will not be utilizing city services, police services, um, for the safety purposes of the event. So in closing the event, as I mentioned, held in Capitola for 20 years with no significant issues, aside from those mentioned relative to the much larger event, uh, in 2018, the Capitola Police, Police Department has not received any complaints or calls for service on any of the previous women on waves events beginning in 1997 and carried on for about 20 years, uh, and, and the issuance potentially of a permit for this year in 2020. That concludes my presentation. I'd be very happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Yes, councilmember Story.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief, for that report. I had a couple of questions, and one, you mentioned in 2018, some of the difficulties had to do with the number of vendors and maybe the types of vendors. Um, I was wondering particularly what those issues were, um, and how it's being resolved. Now, I noticed that I think they were going to have 10 vendors, um, and so what, what's the difference from, that created those issues?
Thank you for the question. A couple of concerns from, some of the local merchants were concerned that there was food and beverage, not alcohol, but beverage, potentially being served during the event. We didn't become aware of these complaints until well after the fact, so the police department was not in a position to follow up on that complaint, uh, but it certainly was a, a concern to us because it was a minor event. And so one of the fixes was to ensure in our meeting with the event organizers and their staff, as we work towards this presentation, ensure that none of the vendors in those tents on the esplanade and the beach along the seawall, uh, were going to be selling food, uh, and, and beverage. We would, we encourage the participants to, um, uh, support our local merchants in the village area for their food and beverage needs. The other, uh, concern was simply related to the congestion and that nexus to a minor special event permit. It was clearly more than 200 people. It was permitted for less than 200 people, minimal or, or no likely impact on city services, and the scale of the event in 2018 was, uh, much larger than that. That concern was brought to staff's attention.
Okay, thank you. I noticed in the application also that, um, they're, um, are bringing in, uh, one trash receptacle and one recycling receptacle. Um, is, has Public Works indicated whether, is that sufficient? It, it seems like it wouldn't be for, you know, 250 to, you know, maybe potentially up to 400 people, so.
And can I ask you to point me to a page as I'm flipping?
Yeah, I'm sorry, it's on page six.
Okay. One trash receptacle, one dumpster, one recycling container. It's difficult for me to answer, based upon the projected number of 350 or 400, uh, I, I don't have necessary expertise to say for sure if that's enough. Um, if you'd like to see the thoughts on that or opinions from our Public Works Director, I'm sure that might be valuable to council and, and the public. Uh, and so I, I'm assuming that it's enough, uh, and I say that because these organizers have run this event, uh, for about 20 years, anticipating that it's much larger, so I'm assuming that it is, but it wouldn't be proper for me to make that determination for you.
Well, thank you. Uh, and one more question, if I may. The event is, the permit is to start at 7:30 AM, uh, but, um, uh, will there be any amplified sound, or is the, uh, sound permit also going to start at 7:30 AM?
No, the sound permit is going to start, I believe, at 11 o'clock in the morning.
Okay, so when the music is to begin, that's the only time that?
With the exception of the announcers during the contest, and, and those adjustments over the years have been that that sound device is directed towards the water as opposed to the village so that it doesn't interfere with local residents.
Right, and I wonder, is an indication of when the contest will actually start, what time?
I'm not quite sure of when the first contest starts. It's in the morning hours.
Okay. Maybe the applicant, if you have some information on that, could, uh, let us know.
Sure.
Obviously, the concern is about having amplified sound at 7:30 in the morning.
Understood.
And, um, so, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Additional council questions? No questions? Councilmember Botorff, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Thank you. All right, with no further, uh, council questions, we will now bring this item to public comment. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Uh, if there's any member of the public that would like to address the council on this item, now would be the time. Going once. All right, welcome.
Hi. Hi, council, uh, mayor, vice mayor, staff. Uh, my name's Kevin Keat. I am a resident of Pleasure Point, and my wife has a business in the Village Ethos Retail Shop. Uh, I want to speak on, uh, up for women on waves from both a parent's perspective and a business owner's. It's, I think, one of the best events we have. Um, my younger daughter here, um, has surfed it twice and had an incredible time, uh, was really upset that there wasn't an event la, this past year. Um, as a small business owner, the more things that we can do to bring locals, especially this, uh, kind of clientele to the business, to the business district in the shoulder seasons, the better. So we strongly support it.
Thank you. Any additional comment? All right, we've got a couple people headed up this way. Hello, welcome.
Hi, I'm, I'm Alana Zanville, and, um, I put on the contest back two years ago now, and, um, I just wanted to answer the question you had. At 7:30 in the morning, we will have all the speakers pointing out to the water, so I don't think it's going to impact the community at all. Um, I'm not sure what time the contest will start because it depends on the tides, uh, but it may start at 7:30. And I really hope that we can continue this, so thank you for listening.
Thank you. We have a couple more members of the public headed up. And please feel free, you can also line up along the wall over here if you, um, want to start a, a line for public comment. Hi, welcome.
Hello. My name's Nanda Malville. I've been involved with this contest since day one, and I feel real strongly that it really brings the community together. It helps all the businesses because people come from out of town and they support the businesses. People enjoy it. It's not like a typical contest where everybody has to win. It has to do with, everybody's a winner because everybody's trying. And as far as I'm concerned, I feel real strongly that this event really helps empower young girls, and it also empowers our older women, because it's a sport that is something that is, there's a lot of history with it, and it brings people together in a really positive way, and it's nothing but aloha. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comment? Hello, welcome.
Hello. Um, my name is Ted Donnelly, and good evening, councilmembers and Mayor Peterson, and congratulations on your appointment, too.
Thank you.
So I also have been involved with this, uh, contest since 97, volunteer, but also as a father. Uh, I had two daughters who participated, as well as my wife in the back, sporting her O3 sweatshirt. Um, as, as the chief was speaking about the number of people there, you got to remember that it's family, it's, it's parents, it's kids, it's surfers and their daughters. And this is such a great program for women and young women in our community. Schools are going to be invited to participate. Every young lady feels special and that they won. Yes, it's a contest. Also, um, the thing is, too, with no food there at the event, I know there was some complaints in the past with the, uh, vendors and the restaurants in Capitola. Be sure that, you know, they're going to be, people are going to be, um, roaming Capitola as well, families, too. Um, to really finalize it is that you received the email from Sally Smith Waymouth. She was, uh, founder of Paradise Surf Shop and one, actually, one of the founders of this contest, too. And I'll quote her, is that "It is a positive, healthy lifestyle for women and girls," and that's something we need to keep going. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, welcome.
Hi, thank you. Um, my name's Danielle, and, um, 2018 was the first year that I participated in women's on waves. Um, I participated in the surf event, uh, the open water swim, and as a vendor. And I have to tell you that for me as a vendor, it was huge. It created connections for me with other women, um, other vendors, people that were specifically looking and seeking out the kind of stuff that I'm making. Um, and it, it's really helped me grow, like, my little small business that I'm doing in the room after work. Um, and I was so sad that I wasn't, you know, around last year because that was a huge boost in sales. It represented probably like 50% of the money that I made in 2018, and not having it in 2019 was really kind of a bummer. It is, like I said, a side job, it's just a thing I do to, I love, um, but it makes a huge difference. And I know that there's other vendors that participated in the event, that it was a huge, you know, it made a huge difference, and they're a small business, too. You know, these aren't big vendors, they're, you know, your local, local people that are just coming together, and, you know, it's a really special event because everybody there has something in common, which is surfing and this beautiful community that we, we all love. And, um, it's just, it's an amazing, amazing event, and to see it go away would just really break my heart, and I know there'd be a lot of people in the town and the city that, that would feel the same way, too, so I hope that we'd be able to continue it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public that would like to address the council on this item? Seeing none, we are now going to take a 20-second pause, uh, to assure that there is no remote public comment coming in to the council. Is this the correct process based on, okay?
It's the process we're going to test out this evening.
All right. Uh, and for any of those wondering, that's also the amount of time you're supposed to spend washing your hands, so. Going to set a timer for 20 seconds.
I've got 20 here.
Oh, you've got it?
Yeah.
Okay. So we're just going to enjoy this awkward 20-second silence together?
Yeah, we've already gotten it. We are, you, you're already through it.
Oh, we're already done?
Yeah.
Oh, that wasn't that awkward at all? Great, fantastic. Good job, team. Um, okay, was there any remote public comment received for that item?
There was not.
There was not? Great. Uh, okay, well, with that, we are going to close public comment for that item and bring it back to council for, uh, discussion and a vote. Uh, is there any, uh, comments on this item? Yes, councilmember Bertrand.
Well, when I first met the organizer and listened to her proposal, um, I was clearly impressed. I was impressed by her devotion to providing this opportunity for young women and older women and people in our community especially. Um, I did go over all the issues that were brought up that, you know, led to the problems in the last time, and, you know, I could see that, uh, some were unfortunate and not meant to happen, and others were maybe planning issues. I can't remember all the discussion, but what I do remember is her commitment to making this event available to the young women and the older women in this community, and I totally support her. I think it's a wonderful thing.
Wonderful, thank you. I'm going to go quickly to, uh, councilmember Botorff on the phone. Any comments?
A quick comment, just want to say welcome back to the women on waves, and I will be supporting this motion.
Wonderful, thank you. Any additional, yes, councilmember Story.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. You know, it's kind of counterintuitive, um, being asked to approve an event when we're in the midst of, uh, canceling so many events. But, um, you know, I think that this is a wonderful event. It's not a new event to Capitola, you just took a break for a year. It's not going to happen until October. Hopefully, all this, uh, um, concern about the virus will be long gone and distant memory for us by then. Um, and, um, you know, but I think it's a wonderful event, um, and, um, it really promotes, um, I think, women and girls empowerment, um, and for that, I want to support it. I would ask that maybe Public Works be able to weigh in on the number of receptacles, um, and if you would just work with them to put over how many we need, just so that we can keep our, uh, beaches clean, um, you know, during that time. And also, I, I do want to, because I recognize that, um, Capitola is just perfectly made for this event and that you're dependent upon our community because of, you know, the break that we have here, um, and it's just ideally suited, and I think that, uh, there would be no other, I think, suitable location. So for all those reasons, um, I'm going to support the permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Brooks, any comments?
Yeah, thank you for bringing this forward. Um, I'd like to make a motion to approve the generals, uh, new general special event permit for the women's on waves surf and swim contest in Capitola Village, including an encroachment permit for use of the Esplanade Park and an amplified sound permit.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. I would just like to say, uh, briefly that I am also in support of this. I'm looking forward to having, uh, women on waves here in Capitola. I also love that on the map you provided, um, you're showing us where the vendor tents are, where the beach is, and then there's also, in case we want to know where the perfect waves are. So I think that's great, because as mentioned, we're, we're perfect for this, so the perfect waves are there on the map. All right, so we have a motion in a second. Should we continue to do roll call because we have, and, okay, we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote. Uh, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Story.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Bertrand.
Here.
Botorff.
Aye.
And Mayor Peterson.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Wonderful. All right, we are going to move right along now. Uh, we're at item eight B, first reading of an ordinance amending chapter 17.74 accessory dwelling units and chapter 17.15, or 17.16, outside the coastal zone for the R1 zoning district. Do we have a staff report?
Good evening, council, Mayor Peterson. Um, I'm here tonight before you for the third time with the update to our ADU ordinance. Um, this evening, um, I'm going to give you a brief overview of where we've been during the past two hearings and some recent, um, information we've received from the California Department of Housing and Community Development regarding our draft ordinance. So on January 16th, the Planning Commission, we gave them an overview on the ADU regulations from the state. The Planning Commission requested that the City Council provide general direction on the approach for the draft ordinance in terms of either matching state law or making the regulations more permissive than the state law. On January 23rd, we came to City Council and provided an overview of the state law. And City Council provided direction to bring the code into compliance with the state regulations and not to incorporate any regulations that are more permissive than the state. The Planning Commission took this direction. And on February 6, 2020, they provided a unanimous positive recommendation for adoption of the draft ADU ordinance with modifications to required parking in the coastal zone. On February 27th, the City Council passed the first reading as recommended by the Planning Commission, which included an exception within the Cliffwood Heights neighborhood for parking. On March 4th, following our meeting with the City Council, I received an email from the State of California Department of Housing and Community Development. They requested, they had reviewed our draft ordinance. And they were very quick in their turnaround in providing comments. This is similar to the process that we do with the Coastal Commission staff and them providing informal comments back to staff. So we did have a follow-up meeting on, a phone call on March 5th with Eric Phillips of our City Attorney's Office, Ben Noble, the planner that's been helping write the ordinance, Matt Orbach, and myself. So it was a very positive meeting. There were three main items that came out of that. So tonight, I'm actually reintroducing two first ordinances to you after we've passed them once, which is a first in my career of coming back with a first ordinance for a second time. But I think this will expedite the process now that we know what HCD, what changes they wanted. So that is why I'm back with slight modifications. So one of, the first item they asked for us was for us to define vacation rentals. Our definition in our code mirrors their definition. So we simply put a reference to the definition of vacation rentals within the ordinance. Second, they, the HCD asks that we specify that a two-story ADU greater than 16 feet in height is required to have Planning Commission review. Under the state law, anything 16 feet or less in height has to go through administrative review and is not subject to a Planning Commission review. So we clarified that 16 feet, a two-story ADU greater than 16 feet in height. And thirdly, and lastly, the draft had a requirement that a statement from the HOA be submitted with an application stating that the ADU complies with the CCNRs and other applicable HOA requirements. At the direction of the HCD, we modified this language to require authorization by the HOA, but no finding of compliance within the CCNRs. With that, I'm recommending that the City Council approve the first reading and waive reading of the text of the proposed ordinance amending Title 17 to align with recent state requirements for accessory dwelling units and floor ratio for single-family residents with an accessory dwelling unit.
Thank you. Does council have any questions for staff? Councilmember Bertrand.
On page 31 of the packet, section J, talk about manufacturing homes and mobile units. Is this provision a direct result of the State of California requiring us to accept manufactured homes and mobile units as ADUs?
It is. This provision comes right out of the new legislation. And specifically, under our general requirements, there's now an allowance for manufactured homes. They have to be in compliance with the California Health and Safety Code, Section 18007. And to make this as user-friendly as possible, we listed what those requirements are right into the ordinance.
So what are they? So we're clear. At least, I'd like to be clear.
Okay, so if you're on page 31 and you're looking at item J?
Yes.
The requirements are listed under J1A, B, C, and D. A is provide a minimum of 320 square feet of floor area. B, that it be built on a permanent chassis. C, be designed for use as a single-family dwelling with or without a foundation when connected to the required utilities. So it would have to be connected to the required utilities. And includes the plumbing, heating, air conditioning, and electrical systems contained within a home.
So that would be like permitted connections?
Required connections.
Right, so those would all be permitted, I guess?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilmember Botorff, any questions? Hearing none. Councilmember Story?
Oh, I think.
Oh.
Just one other question. You can, no follow-up.
Okay. You had a slide last time that showed in terms of the required parking, where that would be in effect in Capitola. Can you bring that up again?
Sure. Was it a map?
Yeah, it was a map. And so there's the coastal, it was designated the difference between the coastal zone and the areas outside the coastal zone. And I just wanted if you could review the parking requirements in those two areas. I should have told you ahead of time.
Okay.
That looks like it.
So I can first go over what the parking requirements are from the state. So, no parking spaces, the first one is the biggest. No parking spaces under the state law are required for internal, junior, or attached ADUs, including garage conversions. So what that leaves is just detached ADUs, which require parking under the state law. And then for those detached ADUs, no parking spaces are required if the ADU is located within one and a half miles walking distance of a public transit, which I have a map that I'll show you next that shows that area. The ADU is located within a National Register Historic District, which makes up a couple of the neighborhoods within Riverview and Loneway areas. When on-street parking permits are required, but not offered to the occupants of the ADU. And we do have on-street parking permits within the city. And when there is a car-share vehicle pickup or drop-off location within one block of the ADU. So this next slide. I'm not sure why it's not going to the next slide. There we go. This next slide shows all locations within Capitola that are within a half-mile walking distance of public transit. There was a stop across from New Brighton on Park Avenue that recently went away. If that stop was reincorporated into Capitola, I think there'd be a small piece of Depot Hill that would be outside of this area. So under this map, the majority of Capitola would not be required to have onsite parking for the ADU. And then we can treat areas within the coastal zone differently. This is a map showing the areas within the coastal zone. It takes about two-thirds of our city land area. And because we have a certified LCP and we can utilize, we need to make a balance between what our coastal provisions are and what we would like to follow in terms of housing and ADU production. So what, the direction we got from the City Council is we're not treating the ADUs differently in terms of the allowance to be able to build them. You can build them now on, the ordinance is much more liberal than our old ordinance in that we used to have a 4,000-square-foot lot minimum that has gone away. We had much smaller sizes for ADUs, up to 640 square feet. Those have gone away. Now it's 800 for a one-bedroom and 1,200 for a two-bedroom. So within the coastal zone, we're still treating the development of ADUs the same. But the one difference was that within the coastal zone, because there's competition for parking on our streets due to the proximity to the coast, it was, the direction was to require parking onsite. So we probably will be seeing more parking in the front yards. We're requiring parking strips in the front yards rather than paving front yards. But that will be an outcome of the ordinance as drafted. But parking will be required onsite, but you're still allowed to develop ADUs in the coastal zone. It's just the change to require within the coastal zone, the parking onsite. It's the one difference. Any other questions?
The remainder of your question, okay. Councilmember Story had a question.
Thank you. The letter from the Coastal Commission that stated March the 9th, it's from John Ainsworth. That was part of our packet. It seems to say, or I believe it does say that our local coastal plan would trump the new ADU regulations within the coastal zone.
Are you there?
So first, I'd like to clarify, I reached out to the Coastal Commission. And that letter is not, was intended for review at the state level. And the gentleman that submitted that, you'll see it says "draft" behind it. It's a draft document that has not been released by the Coastal Commission at this time. So that was a draft. It was reviewed yesterday by the state. But I do, I reached out to our local coastal staff and they said it had not been published as of yet in terms of.
Well, okay, thanks for pointing that out.
But they do say, in the ordinance itself and the state law, it does say that no portion of the HCD, that the law trumps the, our local, I'm sorry, the Coastal Act.
Correct. But, and this is the part that, and it also then seems to say that, that the local Coastal Act needs to be amended to be harmonized with the HCD regulations. So is that where this is going or?
Yes, so I've separated out the ADU update and the sign update so that we're on a fast track to get this in front of the Coastal Commission so that they certify this and it then becomes part of our LCP.
Just to be, what you, what we're passing tonight would be, become a part of our LCP?
Correct.
I guess I'm a little, but, and what we're, what is being proposed is that, that our parking requirements in the coastal zone, excepting for Cliffwood Heights, continue to be required. And so, but, and so that would go and that would be amended in our LCP. But I kind of read this to indicate that if there are inconsistencies between the LCP and government code, Section 65852.2, that the LCP needs to be updated to be consistent with the new ADU provisions to the greatest extent feasible, while still complying with the Coastal Act requirements. So I guess that's.
That's what we're trying to.
Well.
It also, in the beginning of the letter, I think it's the second page, it really talks about the fact that as a local jurisdiction with an LCP, we, it is a balancing act. And that we do have to look at our LCP and LUP to make sure that, you know, it's not just the new legislation at the state for ADUs, but the Coastal Act and our LUP that's in place. And there's a lot of discussions about coastal access and street parking within our land use plan, so.
Yes, yes, yeah, quite a bit. So we're not going to, if we pass this tonight, we're not going to be then later going back to amend our LCP to be in more harmony with the HCD regulations on ADUs. A lot of acronyms there, but.
So after tonight, if we pass the first reading, we'll come back for a second reading. Then there's 30 days. And then we'll submit to the Coastal Commission for certification. And we, at this point, we think that we have grounds from the information. In your last packet, I had noted a couple pages worth, pages worth of LUP references and the local, and the Coastal Act that support our findings for, moving forward for parking onsite. So that will be the test when we go in front of the Coastal Commission for certification. At this point, when we talked with HCD last week, they, they were happy with our ordinance. And they said, "We really don't get involved with the, if you've reviewed it to be consistent with your coastal planning," they weren't going to challenge us on that. And they made that very clear in the, over the phone call. I don't have anything in writing at this point. Several cities have submitted their ordinances to HCD. And they've been doing these informal meetings and giving direction. But they, so they have not done the follow-up that's outlined in the law that there, that, you know, the jurisdictions required to submit to HCD within 60 days of the ordinance passing. But at this point, they haven't followed up in writing with any of those.
Right, thank you.
But they told us they wouldn't be in conflict.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Any questions? I just want to make sure I understood what I just heard. If I'm understanding correctly, you reached out to the state. They said, "Although we require you to not require parking, should you choose to require parking because it's in your local coastal plan, you're not going to be sued for that."
Correct. They didn't say that exactly. But they said, "We're not going to challenge your coastal planning."
Okay. Prior to the state law, have we always required parking? For ADUs?
We have, but in a different context than we do now, but in a different format. It's been tied into the overall floor area ratio of a home.
Right, right, okay. Rather than, okay. Okay. Council, yes?
Yeah. Now, now that you mention that, if someone were to say, if, I'm trying to think of like a workaround of not adding pavers. Is that what you call them, strips? You know, is that the only option for folks who want to apply or to submit a permit for, for parking? I'm just trying to think, you know, there's got to be.
We say pervious. So they can come in with different designs that as long as water can filter through it and it's pervious.
Okay.
And we ask for two strips so the tires can be on the, on the pervious material.
Yeah, I think we keep just imagining it's going to be on everybody's front yard, a vehicle. And there's just lots of different scenarios that could possibly take place, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any additional questions from council? Seeing none, we will bring it to public comment. Now is the time for members of the public to address the council on this matter. You will have three minutes for your comments. Hello, welcome.
Hi there. My name is Ralph Assanfield. I was the gentleman who sent you the information about the Coastal Commission's draft memo. I was also at the Coastal Commission hearing yesterday. And when they introduced that draft memo, they said, "The memo reiterates our position that while ADU law is not meant to supersede or alter or lessen the effect or the intent of the Coastal Act, this doesn't mean that local governments in the coastal zone don't have to comply with the new law or can avoid compliance by simply not amending their LCPs, as some have asserted." So I, I think your planning staff might be guiding you in a direction that you shouldn't be going down. Instead, I would suggest that you amend your local coastal program to find alternative ways to allow for, for parking or to limit parking on the streets without requiring the off-street parking. Right now, you essentially have unlimited parking outside of Capitola Village. You could put some sort of restriction on the number of permits that are issued to individuals or to residences who park vehicles outside of the village. I think that's a better approach to take than requiring the off-street parking for ADUs. I lived in an ADU in Capitola for two years. I didn't have a car. I didn't need a car. There was zero impact for me living in this ADU without, without, without a vehicle. If you had required this ordinance at the time that my ADU was constructed, I wouldn't have been able to have a kitchen in my home. And even though I, because there wasn't, there wasn't this new required off-street parking, there wasn't a place to put this off-street parking. And it would have limited my ability to live in Capitola. I work in Capitola. I take a, I took a bike to work. And like I said, I think there are other ways that you I, I think there are other ways that you can get around this parking requirement than, than by requiring off-street parking. I think the off-street parking is going to make it really challenging to create ADUs, especially in the village where you already have a parking restriction, and there wouldn't necessarily be an increase in parking as, impacts as long as you, you focus on changing your, your, your on-street permitted parking situation outside of the village as well. When you're creating an ADU in a, in a bedroom, and someone can already live and rent that bedroom, you don't require off-street parking until there's a kitchen in it, that doesn't make any sense. I, I think you can do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, welcome.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm a homeowner and resident in Capitola, and I would like to object to the parking requirement for accessory dwelling units or ADUs as part of the new ordinance requirement. The intent of the new state ADU regulation is to increase the supply of affordable housing by allowing ADUs without the obstacles of discretionary review permits and restrictions such as parking requirements. The amendment being considered tonight requires parking for ADUs in the coastal zone, which is the entire city except for Cliffwood Heights. This requirement does not further the intent of the state ordinance to create more affordable housing. Requiring parking will restrict the number of ADUs in Capitola. Requiring parking will substantially add to the cost of housing, therefore reducing affordability. Why do you consider that this coastal zone is different than non-coastal zone areas in that it justifies parking for an ADU? The only reason I can think of is to reduce development and, of course, therefore parking demand. With dual state codes, the state coastal zone allows the city an option of not complying with the state government code, which prohibits parking requirements for ADUs, except under specific circumstances. Is providing parking a higher priority than increasing affordable housing in Capitola? And parking is not a problem unique in Capitola. Do not amend the ordinance with the requirement for parking for ADUs. Also, I rented an apartment at 405 Riverview Avenue in the 1980s, when it was a lot less crowded, and part of the rental agreement was that there was no parking provided, and therefore, you know, if you had a car, you couldn't park. So we took the bus and, and rode our bicycles to school. So that's what we did, because parking wasn't an option for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional member of the public that would like to address the council? Hello, welcome.
Good evening, members of the Honorable City Council and Mayor. I, fortunately, I live close enough, and I can watch on TV, and at the right time, I can come down, and I don't have my pajamas on, but I want, I really want to speak on issue, this issue, in that I actually work in a business that deals with ADUs. There, there really has not been a lot of ADUs that have come through the planning process since we started doing this, and, and there's a number of reasons. One is the cost of putting an ADU, and the amount of time and, and costs. It was regulated by everything from the cost of a water meter to the building process itself. And the state of California, their intent, their intent is just to open up the idea of bringing, not necessarily call it high density, but giving a place for somebody, your family, your grandmother, someone to live within your community and stay there. You know, it's, it's more of a share, it may be just splitting people more than adding people. And we, for years, have actually designed our communities around the automobile. Is that for me?
Yeah, it was just saying one minute down, you're, you're good.
Yeah. It's time, it's time that we stop doing that. We have to start designing for people who live here. Most of our community is a walking community. Even though the people have cars, they are still, we can walk most of the places we have to go to, it's a real wonderful benefit for us. And, and so adding, adding the commitment of a parking space to two-thirds of the city in the coastal zone will kill this ordinance. You might as well not even have this ordinance. You've thrown it out the window. People will not come in and pay for the extra cost and the effort to go do with the, the, the parking. I want to take you to the design feature of it. Let's, let's take my house, for example. I have a 40-foot frontage, which is pretty typical of Riverview Terrace here. And so right now, all the driveways in my neighborhood are 12 feet wide. When you put this ordinance in a requirement of second party, every one of those parking spaces are going to be 20 feet across the front of the, front of these lots, and they're going to have a 16-foot driveway to get in and out of them. So you're, you're doubling the amount of concrete on every lot that, that is, there's a, not only is it a drainage problem, it's a, it's a visual thing, because when you, when you're adding another parking spot to the front of the house, you've taken all the landscape out the front of it. I think one of the inviting things in my street is, is that we have so much landscape along there. So it doesn't make any sense to take the party. People will live with the parking issue. They will, they will live in every one of these neighborhoods, and they'll adjust to it. And the other, the other problem is, is as you widen the driveways, you've taken away the parking spot in the front, so there's no gain. So the, the gain is, you put it on your lot, you've lost the one in front, because your driveways are much wider. It, it's not a good practice, and I think that you guys have to be honest with, with the community here, that if, if you enact this thing the way it's written now, that you will kill the ADA ordinance in this county, and people will not be coming in to apply for them. It's a state, it's just a state mandate that you need to fulfill. Regardless of Coastal Commission, no other city or county has enacted a parking requirement for theirs. And so the county and the city are both coastal zone, just like we are. They do not require parking. Please do not keep the parking thing in there. Thank you.
Any other member of the public that would like to address the council on this item? Saying none, we'll bring it back to council for discussion and vote. And we will start, let's start on the phone with Councilmember Botwurf. Do you have any comments?
No, I don't have any comments on this issue, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember comments? Yes?
To me, the higher, higher benefit to the community is to provide housing, not to provide more parking. So I'm inclined to want to delete this particular portion dealing with providing, the necessity of provide parking.
Okay. Councilmember Story?
Yeah, thank, yeah, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everyone, for coming out and giving us your point of view. I lived in Capitola for 40 years, have served many years on the City Council, and over those decades, Capitola has dealt with traffic and parking issues perpetually, consistently. And, and as a part of that, we have developed a local coastal plan, program, which is actually written by the Coastal Commission, and we have our implementation, implementation provisions. Those implementation provisions state that the development in the coastal zone will assure that there's adequate parking available to accommodate, you know, the need of new users. So now we're just asking to scrap that, throw it out, because the state has now imposed these new requirements. So let's talk a little bit about, the coastal zone does not cover all of Capitola. It's up on the map, and you can see the sections that it includes. We've already exempted all of Cliffwood Heights, which is almost about half of that coastal, the coastal zone area. What you have left are the Village, the Jewel Box, the Avenues, and Depot Hill. And, and I would submit that those are highly congested communities, and with, and highly congested with a lot of automobiles. I think it's really commendable that everybody finds alternative means of transportation, but most people do not do that. And I also want to acknowledge that Capitola, within its square mile, probably has more of mobile homes, multifamily apartments and condominiums, and mixed-use, commercial residential structures than certainly almost any other place in the county. So if there is a possibility to harmonize our local coastal program and our implementation plan, so that it is more consistent with these new HCD requirements on ADUs, I'm very willing, and maybe we should study that. But I am reluctant just to throw out decades of effort and concern at this, at the, at this moment. So I'm going to continue to support the, the zoning code or the, the ordinance as it has been presented to us. And I would encourage, we should continue to look at our local coastal program and seeing whether it meets our needs, or if we have the ability to relax the parking requirement in that area. Because yes, I do view the coastal zone as being different. We've been told that by the Coastal Commission and the Coastal Development Act. So I think that we should treat it differently, and it's not just about for us. It's about all visitors and people who want to have access for the coast. And if it's, all the parking is occupied by residents, then we diminish the amount of access to the coast. I think there needs to be more thought put into balancing those conflicting interests. I would like to see us do that. I also want to emphasize that Capitola is going through a new mall development, and as part of that development, the proposal is to bring in over 600 new residential units, which is going to also create traffic and parking impacts on our community. And I think that that just is a lot to digest all at once. I would like for us to take a more thoughtful and planned process. And if that includes reviewing, taking the time to review our local coastal program and the implementation of it, let's do that. But not with just a strike of a pen, kind of cast out decades of local control. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Brooks, comments?
Yeah, so I appreciate you taking the time to present this to us. There's a lot to it, it's been presented several times. I, I'm in agreement with Councilmember Story on that, that it feels a bit rushed. It feels like there's some conflicting information and, and, um, like there's just conflicting information coming at us. And I, at the, at the end of the day, do not want to supersede state law and then get in trouble with the Coastal Commission, or vice versa. And I would be interested in looking at whether there's some other options for people who want to build ADUs, but it might not work for them to put two strips of concrete in, on their property. I don't know what other cities are doing at this point in time, if we can look at other options, but, but primarily, I'm in agreement. We've worked really hard in preserving our special community and really having a special place where folks can come and visit, to visit our beaches. But in addition to that, I completely understand what the state is trying to do in, in creating more housing opportunities. We're, this isn't a one-size-fits-all state law. We're a small 10,000-resident town, and I would be interested in looking at some other parking choices or options for folks who want to apply for ADUs. So I'm in agreement that we should take a pause on this and look at some other options. And I don't know if that's entirely what you were alluding to, Councilmember Story, but that's, that's what I would like to see.
Is that a motion? Or just a discussion?
Let me ask this, staff, is there, is there any way to survey what other communities are doing? Or is this looking like it's pretty cut and dry, where it's all or nothing?
So I, I have reached out to, the city of Santa Cruz is not requiring parking for their ADUs within the coastal zone. However, in the county, certain areas of their coastal zone, they're requiring parking that are like pleasure point, because there's such an impact there, and the streets are so crowded. So they're taking a...
Similar approach.
Similar approach. We're much smaller than the county, and if, if you look at the distance of the pleasure point neighborhood compared to our coastline in Capitola. So they, there are, people are taking different approaches. At this point, LCPs have not been certified, so the answer of whether or not the Coastal Commission is going to be certifying the counties or the cities, I can't answer that for you. I know the city submitted their LCP update, I believe, last week. So we're all just, you know, there was a, we're supposed to, the new state law came into effect on January 1st, so it's very fresh.
Yeah.
I think we'll know more in the next...
Sure.
...three to four months. So if it's something that you want us to move forward with an ordinance at this point, we've got to go through the certification process, we can, we'll be updating, we're going to be working on our LCP update regardless. So at that point, if, if we're moving forward for adoption with our LCP, I could give you an update on what other jurisdictions are doing. But it would be good to have something on the books, because we have questions coming in daily. And at this point, our, what's drafted is, generally, it's in compliance from what we're hearing with it, from the HCD, with the state law.
If I may do, have a follow-up question? And if we didn't, then it would be status quo to what the state regs are, correct? If we did nothing, we would just have to abide by state law?
Well, this is interesting. In that draft letter that came out, that it is draft, so I, I do want to say that we shouldn't be depending on that letter at this point yet, but they did mention that for cities, we should be following until we have the new ordinance certified by the Coastal Commission. We should actually be following the practices of our old, you know, keeping to the 4,000-square-foot minimum to the certified LCP that we have in place. So that would be, I want to say, our 2017, 2018 ordinance, which will really set us back in terms of production, because parking is required. And there's a lot size minimum, there's a lot of oversight by the Planning Commission in our older ordinance. So this is more liberal if we move forward, at least with this piece at this time.
Yeah, and just to clarify, I wasn't proposing that we, you know, not pass anything tonight, or just continue to defer it, because I think it would be more productive for ADUs if we did have this in place. But what I was suggesting is that we continue to look at our LCP, really do a, an analysis and study this, and see if over time, we could relax those standards in the coastal zone without it impacting our coastal access, the neighborhood residents, and those other issues that it may bring. So that's what I was suggesting.
Thank you.
Okay, a couple comments, a couple questions. It sounds like there is some confusion, and, and I know that I personally am confused between what the Coastal Commission is saying, what the state is saying, but really, we don't have anything final from either of those, right? Do we have the opportunity to reach out to the state and ask them for written guidance? I know you, you said you've spoken with them on the phone. Is it possible to get written guidance from them saying in writing, one way or another?
The, the only thing they've put in, in writing so far has been the, like, added definition for vacation rental, those, the points that I went over and have been incorporated. He did make a point during our phone call that they have not responded with official findings for any of the cities at this point. I will, once, the timeframe to do that is once we've adopted an ordinance. We're required to submit it within 60 days.
Is there, Vice Mayor Brooks mentioned something along the lines of, can we look at other options? So I know, for example, that when we issue parking permits, it's based on the number of vehicles registered to an address. So if someone was to create an ADU and provide some kind of proof that they have less vehicles registered to their address than they have parking spaces on site already, would we be allowed to provide some kind of exemption from requiring them to provide additional parking? So for example, if someone's got a two-car garage in a driveway, and they can prove that they don't have three or four cars registered to their house, and an ADU would only provide an additional car that could still fit in their driveway, could we provide them an, an exception? Is that something that's in any way written in, or could be?
The trick with land use is, when, when you're setting up your regulations, you really want to base it on not who the homeowner is and what they have at that point in time, but the impact, like, the typical impacts of a single-family home over time. So right now, the way our ordinance is written is dependent on the size of the home. We require specific amounts of parking. And then we used to tie in our ADU requirement into the overall square footage of the home. So if the ADU took it to a new threshold, we would add, we would require another parking space. During our last update to our code, the direction in 2018 was to always require an extra space for an ADU. So that was a substantial change because people could modify their homes up to a certain point and not trigger more parking. So that, there are different ways we can approach this with parking. I would be hesitant to tying it to the halves of what one property owner has at that moment in time and what the future property owner could have in the future in terms of number of cars. It's easier when you're doing annual parking passes to check on those things. But when you're tying number of parking spaces to a home, we wouldn't be doing annual reviews.
All right, well, I've got to say, this has been a difficult issue for me personally because I understand how congested many of our neighborhoods are already with parking. I live in one that's incredibly congested with parking. I also feel very deeply and have also experienced the shortage of housing and the need for additional homes in our community. As Councilmember Story mentioned, we're going to be building several additional homes and several hundred additional homes come the development of the mall, or at least that's the plan as of right now. So I'm quite torn on it, to be quite honest. It's a very difficult decision. With that being said, we've had a discussion. Is there any additional discussion? Does anyone have a motion to be made?
I'll attempt a motion. I'll move that we pass the first reading of the proposed ordinance, amending Title 17 and as presented by staff this evening.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. I have one more question, if it's not too late. So when we're all done with this, tonight, we're still waiting for our local coastal plan to be approved, correct? And if it does, if at any point we decide this isn't working, we need to see more ADUs built, we need more housing, we're going to change it again. We can do that, correct? At any point?
Yeah, we're going to, so after the adoption of this, we will move forward with the LCP submittal for certification.
Yes, okay.
So I believe we could withdraw our application, but it would be, they're saying that they're moving through these fast. They're taking these, it's a top priority, that was also in the letter. So I think it will move quite fast through coastal, but but at any point, you're welcome to ask me to bring back the ordinance and we can review it and amend it and
I think the timelines we're talking about would be a little bit longer than just this ordinance. It sounds like the mayor you're talking about sort of down the road when we see the implications, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the only limitation is, is we can only get three LCP amendments a year. We don't traditionally submit all three, but that would be the only limitation on making a future amendment down the road.
Did you have additional?
I just wanted to see confidence in that answer because in fact, we do not have a lot of community or neighbors turning in applications for ADUs now. And the hope is that we see more in the future. And so if we do not see more, I absolutely want to make sure that we can make those changes if necessary. We've asked that other information come back in a year. So I just want to maybe, I just, are we, yes, it can be updated or changed or amended?
Yes.
Okay, great, then I will keep my, I will continue with my motion then or my second.
Okay, any additional comments from council? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Story?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Bertrand?
Aye.
Botorff?
Aye.
And Mayor Peterson?
Aye. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. We're going to move on to item 8C. Consider fiscal year 2021 budget principles and goals.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and council. So tonight, we're going to be talking about our budget goals and principles for the upcoming budget cycle. Annually, we prepare a budget, which is really the city's blueprint or operations plan for a coming year, lays out where our resources are going, both financial and staff. In addition, the purpose behind budget principles and identifying key projects is really to help establish the metrics to measure performance and also help staff in terms of the development of the draft budget and understand where the resources should be allocated and what we propose for council review. The principles, kind of view behind them is the overarching principles. They're almost like sort of mission statements for the city, kind of what we want to really focus on accomplishing at a broad level. Key projects and programs, that really provides the line item detail within the budget to make sure that what the council wants to see can be achieved. We've identified three sort of high-level principles for the city in the past. So we'll review them briefly and confirm that that's where the council would like to see them stay or if you'd like to see them modified. We have fiscal policy principles, public service principles, and public improvement principles. Under fiscal policy principles, we talk about a maintained and balanced budget to ensure the revenues and expenditures match, that we're not using one-time revenues to balance the budget, ensure that the budget plan, plans for future costs increases, particularly CalPERS as we move forward, and has reasonable revenue estimates. Under public service principles, we focus on the transparency and accessibility to our government. We recognize the high priority that our community places on public safety. And we always analyze service level increases with their projected long-term fiscal impacts to the city. Under public improvement principles, we talk about maintaining the city's infrastructure, providing the maximum available funding for the pavement management program, maintaining and improving our natural resources, ensuring that the maintenance and cleanliness of our city facilities, sidewalks, and streets. So those are the three high-level budget principles. They've remained relatively consistent over the years. We've definitely added some bullets under these in the past and subtracted at times. But those are sort of the high-level principles. Next, I want to just take a brief moment to review some of the specific goals and policies and programs that were identified for the 1920 budget work plan and briefly touch on where they are. First ones are fiscal. We talked about addressing rising CalPERS costs. This is obviously an ongoing challenge. We will continue to talk about it and we will continue to focus on it in the budget. Review and evaluate the community grant program. That's obviously been underway, and we got the first presentation of our strategic plan. And we have an item that will be coming back to talk about how we can develop specific goals and metrics for our community grant program moving forward. And then we were specifically charted staff in the fact to work together to identify potential revenue options. And there actually is a polling contract on your agenda later this evening, which is some follow-up on that item that's coming back this evening. We talk about under public service, working with the mall ownership on the redevelopment project. I think everybody's familiar with the progress we've made there. As a brief update, the mall ownership group is, they had told you that they would be resubmitting in January or February. That has obviously come and gone. My understanding is they're continuing to work with some of the other property owners on some new challenges that have come up just in terms of the relationship between the different property owners at the mall site. We wanted to evaluate parking meter technology. That's been done. It was related to some of the 2G problems with some of our old meters and some of the, frankly, the programming issues, I think, with some of our pay stations. Art and Cultural Commission, council asked them to focus on 41st Avenue corridor and the library, completing a rec strategic plan that's been presented to council, and then work towards approval of our zoning code update with the Coastal Commission. And then lastly, we touched on our public service principles from last year, which were licensing for two cannabis retail locations. They're both, at this point, almost fully licensed with the city, and we expect the first one to be operational relatively shortly. The second one is going in the H&R block site, which they don't get the keys to until May. So they're going to be a little bit later. The youth children's fund, using it, use the dedicated children's fund, and we have identified uses for that in the budget and through budget allocations during the year. We allocated the freed-up funding, that was freed up with the youth program funding to the community center. We did that in the budget. We're growing the relationship with Central Fire, maybe not as fast as we wanted to last year in the budget. And then we did a state and the city report last year with the budget. So that was a quick review of what we did last year. Oh, one more. And then we talk about completing the funded CIP projects. And we have one of them out to bid. One's going to be bidding March, one under construction. Two, we plan to bid by August. And three, that are on hold due to other agency holdups. And we can talk more about that if you want to later tonight. Library construction is obviously underway. Our goal was to complete it this year. I don't know that we're going to get there. It's going to be close this fiscal year, probably will bleed into next. Worf design and Sequo was supposed to be done this year. Complete Sequo, we're still, that's still our goal, to complete it this fiscal year. Evaluate the unfunded CIPs. And we've been doing that, obviously. And then complete the Riston Park. And that, at this point, is on hold due to state funding for the parks grant program, which we expect funding for. So with that, we'll be asking council to help identify key projects and programs for this next year's budget. I think I've touched on most of these points already. We suggest identifying key projects in the budget. I do want everybody to keep in mind, because it seems like all we talk about at this stage, but that the coronavirus situation is rapidly changing the dynamics in the city. You know, we were just here doing a mid-year report two weeks ago, and we weren't talking about fiscal impacts from coronavirus. I would actually now be surprised if we don't see fiscal impacts this current year from coronavirus. You know, and that's probably in the form of changes in our TOT revenue as potential, as well as potentially sales tax. So what this probably means is that we will be impacting the fund balance more heavily than we anticipated. My staff, we will be looking at the budget again and see if there are things that we can stop doing now to try to minimize that impact. And the impacts could continue into next fiscal year. So as we think about our key projects and programs, I want everybody just to keep that in mind, that it very well may be as more of a survival mode rather than kind of a program expansion mode. And then the process we've used in the past is council members can each identify a key project or two or three, whatever they want. And then we try to winnow them down into the key projects and programs for next year's budget cycle. I also have suggested some, very quickly, I don't think there will be any surprises here, is CalPERS costs, number one. Two, revenue options. Three, never-ending zoning code with the Coastal Commission. Four, mall redevelopment. Five, getting the funded CIP projects done and delivered. Six, they get their own bullet, library, jetty, flume. Complete this fiscal, this next fiscal year, 2021, and then getting all the permits necessary for the Worf. And then the last one is respond to the coronavirus crisis. So with that, I'm available for questions.
Any questions for staff? Questions? Councilmember Botorff, any questions?
I have no question.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we will bring it to public comment. Is there any member of the public that would like to address the council on this item? Seeing none, we will do remote public comment. Are we doing 20 seconds or?
Yeah, let's give it a moment or two.
Okay. A moment to determine if any remote public comment will be received.
I think you're good.
Okay, public comment for this item is now closed. We'll bring it back to council for deliberation and a vote. Councilmember comments? Councilmember Story? Vice Mayor Brooks, any comments?
Yeah, I can start, I can maybe take a stab at this. And possibly maybe do it, I'm thinking, because I have some notes here, to begin with just fiscal. Is that a good approach?
Sure.
Is that okay with, I don't know what you have set up there.
Yeah, I just put down the ones that staff had already identified, but go ahead.
Perhaps I might want to just tweak some of the ones you've suggested to minimize the length of. And I'm going to seek our attorney's advice. Should I begin this by motion? Should, do you, I mean, that the items I'm going to bring forward, do you want me to take, do we want to take each individually fiscal, public service as an individual motion or altogether?
It doesn't matter so much for my purposes. It really is just what is easiest for the council and the staff, really, in terms of keeping track. So I'll defer to the city manager on that, whatever gives.
If I recall, in previous years, we just go down with our comments of here's what I think should be most important, and then at the end, we kind of come together to say, do we agree on any of these in particular? Is there any that we want to leave out? Is there a general guidance on each one of these items?
For example, this is the spreadsheet we developed last year.
Okay, oh, thanks.
So we went through, these were all the things that were mentioned, and then we kind of put checks, and then you guys identified which ones you wanted to carry.
And then we did it all as one fell
Yeah.
That's probably most efficient.
Okay, great. Okay, so I'll start with fiscal then. And so some of the things I've noted here are explore more grant opportunities to fund safety and environmental policies, such as our anti-vaping and plastic ordinances. And while you're typing, city manager, I agree that these items I'm bringing forward tonight, I did keep in mind that that we will probably have some budgetary implications on, that will likely have a negative impact on our revenue, put stress on our city. So my recommendations this evening, I just want to add that are simply priorities that I'm making that I anticipate will be fluid throughout the year based on what's actually possible, and I want to share that with the rest of council. So your item number five, continue working with the mall ownership group to redevelopment of the mall. I would add to that to actually create a two-year strategic plan for when the mall closes, to include that in, into that one, if you feel comfortable doing so, or if you want to keep them separate.
I would do a separate one.
Okay.
This would be a separate department working on this.
Okay.
How about a three-year plan?
Three-year plan, love it. To move the dedicated children's fund to the Parks and Rec Department. To support the creation and expansions of hotels within our city limits in the appropriate areas. To cut unnecessary memberships.
I can't spell, I'm sorry.
I know, it's okay. And then evaluate potential tax measures to help mitigate the impacts of our mall redevelopment.
How do we rephrase this one then?
Yes.
Is this one good, pursue future revenue options, or more specifically?
More specifically, tax measures.
Oh, okay.
To evaluate potential tax measures. That's what I'm thinking. And that's all I have for fiscal.
Do you, do you want to go ahead and go through all of them that you have? And then we can do this by council member instead of going section by section? Would that be?
I think that's fine, yeah.
Does the city have a preference?
All right. So for public service, to go above and beyond in keeping constituents informed about their government meetings and ensure all members of the community are made aware of projects that will directly affect them.
Is that a budget request?
No, public service. I moved on to public service.
Right, but this is budget principles and goals.
Okay, then you can, when we get there, we can strike through it. Is this really, is it, okay. So continue to fund and make available to the public free feminine hygiene products. We're already doing that in some of our places here at the city, but to include city hall, the police department, beach bathrooms, and the community center.
Don't wait for me. Don't wait for me here, I'm going to be struggling with these.
Feminine hygiene products.
We'll get that one in a second.
Expand opportunity for scholarships to all Parks and Rec programming. Collaborate with local community partners in updating one of our current park play structures to be universally designed for children of all abilities.
Help me again with that one.
Collaborate with local partners, community partners, in updating one of our current park play structures to be universally designed for children of all abilities. For children with all abilities.
Universal design is?
That's specific to, we can always add it, but I want to be careful with that language. To continue to enhance emergency preparedness at the city level and look into receiving grant monies to purchase a generator. It's a lot of pressure to type that.
I know, it is.
You're doing great. And have city council create and set priorities for our community grants. Okay, so for public improvements, so I don't know again, which part, if this is the part of the motion, but I'd like for staff to develop a list of projects that would be necessary for the mall redevelopment itself, in and of itself. I'm not suggesting that the city would pay for all of these projects, but we simply need to start identifying them so we can better negotiate the projects with the mall developer. Is that okay? Okay, so then I want to make sure that we have enough funding to even create any new CIP projects. And I'd like to staff to project potential costs for each of these and bring them back to council at a later time. So I don't, I just want to throw that out there now.
Is that evaluating cost of existing CIPs or this?
Well, I think we can't do anything about last year's because we're in, they're out to bid, but for this year's. So if we prioritize them, and then if budgetary resources allow, then I would propose that we evaluate the traffic flow at Cliff and Wharf intersection, potentially looking at a roundabout maybe there, or something that will help mitigate traffic congestion in that area. And again, if budgetary resources allow for sidewalks on Kennedy and McGregor, sort of past Sir Francis. And, no, okay. That is all I have for you tonight, everyone.
All right. Councilmember Story?
Thank you. That's a great list, actually.
Thank you, Sam.
I don't have very many. I just maybe have one in each of the categories, under fiscal policy. And kind of coming off of what the city manager had recommended in terms of responding to COVID-19. I think that we should take a more affirmative and maybe defensive posture concerning the fiscal impacts of the coronavirus. Trying to determine how soon we can get some tracking of what the impacts on sale taxes are going to be on TOT. And really trying to quantify that and as soon as possible so that we can start taking immediate action to respond to it. I think that's probably the, you know, I guess, top of mind for me. And I think the sooner we're, are aware of the impacts, the better we can take action to hopefully mitigate them. Under public service and along those same lines, I hope we can, if this virus continues to spread and as people start to more distance themselves from one another and become more isolated socially, I would hope that we as a city could try to see what we could do to kind of help people stay connected in a healthy way. I don't know that I have an answer to that, but it seems like we could have a role in now kind of a new dynamic. I think the adjustments that we've made to this meeting, maybe one of them, but maybe there's other things that we could do through Parks and Recs and even in our city administration to just one, trying to keep our constituents, make sure they're informed. If they need to reach out to somebody that they can contact the city to get information. So those are in terms of public service. For public improvements, well, I think I just, I'd like to see the Rissman Park. It's kind of always gets kicked down the road. And so it was on the list last year. I would, you know, maybe like it, if it's feasible, to bring it back up to the top. And, and they're all kind of, I mean, the library is going to be finished soon. And so it'd be nice to have that, those two as really a community space. And, and I think the other in terms of public improvements are Claire Street. I know we had allocated some money for Claire Street, but I think there needs to be ongoing focus to that Claire's between Wharf and 41st Avenue.
So this is the Not Claire's Light, the project we funded last year, but this would be a more, the more complete Claire's project?
Yeah. And that's my list.
Thank you. Councilmember Bertrand?
So Claire's has been on the everyone's list since I moved here to Capitol. It's been over 20 years, maybe 22 years. So I was going to talk about Claire's also, but I think finance first. Finance is an idea that I've been working with the finance director for some time now. And that is to review the parking permits for hotels and other rentals, like beach rentals in the city. There's an indication that that's been largely ignored and that could generate quite a bit more money that would help us balance our budget. So I'd like that on. In terms of public improvements for Claire's, oh, excuse me, one more finance one. Working with the trustees of the school district, I think we could probably work with them to come up with a policy that would allow us to serve alcohol at the J Street Community Center. That's some, an agreement that we've made, but they weren't, not everyone's really aware of that because it's an old, long forgotten. So I think if we actually talk with Scott Turnbull, we could actually come up with some agreement there. And that would help benefit the whole rec program. We generate a lot more money and also provide a service to the community. Also in terms of community improvements, I would be glad if on Claire's we provided at least two crossings for pedestrians. One of the thing I keep seeing, I mean, I don't want to wait for road improvement or anything like that. I just want to see two crossings so pedestrians could walk across the street and not have to worry about being run down. Yes, you have a comment?
I do, I'm looking at our public works director. My understanding is that the Claire's Light project that we approved last year does in fact include those two?
It will, it will include, yeah, I pushed that then. But the cost to put two improvements in on crosswords, and the reason why we pushed off Claire's is because we've never had the CIP budget.
Right.
So if it's absolutely guaranteed that we actually have the CIP budget, fine. But if we don't really have the money to do Claire's Light, which was my idea originally, then let's go ahead with at least two crossings so that there's safe, there's a safety issue, you know?
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor and council. I will be coming forward with the Claire's Light design options for the council in the next meeting or two. So that will be coming, and there is sufficient funding to move forward.
There is sufficient, that is great to hear. Because I hear so many complaints from, especially those in the mobile home yards. So the other one, as a community improvement that would actually be good for kids, is there's a grant program that we have to apply for, but it has to be done in conjunction with the school district. And I've been told about this a couple of times. And the issue here is to improve the soccer field at the schoolyard and extend a little bit into the Monterey Park. So that would be a wonderful improvement for soccer players in this community. Right now, there's just no regulation, at least for that kind of school population, soccer field. So we have to do these two projects in conjunction with the school district. One, J Street in terms of serving alcohol, and the other is applying for a grant program so we could extend the soccer program. But we have to be the agency, it can't be them. And then the Claire's, if that's coming forward, and then also the review of the parking permits for hotels, et cetera.
Thank you. Councilmember Botorff?
I have nothing to add to the comments already made.
Thank you. I also have no additional items to add. I think it's really important for us to all consider that we're facing some budget deficits in the coming years, that we are still not identifying, have not identified ways to address our rising calpers costs. What I will say is what I agree with, or that you can put an X next to my name in the things that have already been identified. Identifying the potential tax measures to offset the impacts of the mall. The Coastal Commission certification of the zoning code update, I think is important. Is that a financial?
We'll figure out where that one goes. I think they just got pulled in.
I guess what I'm trying to clarify is this is a discussion of budget principles and goals.
Yeah, I mean, this is budget, this budget principles and goals, it's also setting the work plan.
Okay.
Right?
Response to COVID-19, completing funded CIPs, library, jetty, flume, permits for the wharf. Identifying, exploring grant opportunities I'm open for. Any fiscal plan or strategic plans, I think, need to be done in-house. I think it would be unwise for us to hire any additional contractors to do that for us at a time when we're already trying to come up with our, our funding sources for other things. Cutting unnecessary memberships, I think, would also be an important one. Can you scroll down a little bit?
Yeah.
Thank you. No, 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 I'm sorry, I didn't notice you were still typing, my apologies. The potential for pursuing grants for a generator, I think, would be another good one. An important one. Traffic flow at Cliff and Wharf, sidewalks. I think, again, if we can identify funding that we already have within our CIP funds, that's, that's great. If not, I really want to highly stress that I don't think it's the time to be adding any additional projects that we don't have the funding for. Okay, and that's where I will, where I will end my, my comments there.
Did you go over the other ones, like 10, 11, 12?
10, 11, 12?
Go, can you go back?
Can you scroll up? Obtain all permits for the wharf?
No, where is it? Number 22?
22, yeah, that's, that's fine with me.
This one?
Yes. Yes, I did. Yes, I did. I'm not opposed to, to expanding a Parks and Rec scholarship program, but right now, unless we have a funding source identified for it, I don't think that it should become a priority.
May, may I add an edit to 23? Expand Parks and Rec Scholarship Program utilizing the Dedicated Children's Fund, which we already have.
Actually, in that case, I do want to add one thing. I would like us to, at some point, consider how we are pulling funds from the Dedicated Children's Fund because I feel like we're kind of doing it as a one-off every time we want to create something new. And I think it's great to have it as that option. But because we only look at our other grant programs every two years, I think it's also important for us to consider how we want to use the Dedicated Children's Fund in a way that's a little bit more strategic than it is now. A plan for it, yes. But I will also, where'd it go? Expand Parks and Rec Scholarship using Children's Fund, I'm okay with that. But I also want us to, at some point, establish a plan for how we're using the Children's Fund. I think that's going to be important also.
Mayor Peterson, may I, then, one of my items was, was to move the Dedicated Children's Funds to Parks and Rec for that very reason, to help with prioritization. So I don't know if there's like an and to that, instead of it being separate. I don't know how, because that's exactly why I put it on there like that.
If you can clarify, just right now, some of the funding that comes out of the Dedicated Children's Fund are for community programs. Like I think Boys and Girls Club might be one of them, something like that. So are you recommending that we have the Parks and Rec Department decide how those funds will be spent in the community? Or that we put all of our community funding in that Children's Fund?
No, I think it's a twofold, that we still need to set our priorities for our, our, our grants. And that was one of the items. It's, it's, I, I think we're almost saying the same thing, where we need to set our priorities and figure out how to spend this money. But in addition to that, since it's a separate fund, it, it needs a place. And I think that the place for that would be under Parks and Rec. That's where, where my thought was, was going with that.
In hearing the conversation, I actually think potentially this could be collapsed down into one. I mean, I think what I'm hearing, the way the city operates, I don't think that we would move the funds into rec, per se. What we would do is, I think what you're suggesting, correct me if I'm wrong, is that you think the Children's Fund, the rec department should identify some uses and propose them to council. Right? We had a strategic plan, there was lots of things that were going to cost money. A lot of them sounded really interesting. Maybe the Children's Fund could be a resource. So maybe what, and you know, please correct me if I'm wrong, but maybe the recommendation here is, is establish a plan for the use of the Children's Fund in light of the Recreation Strategic Plan and focusing on scholarships. Maybe that's kind of taking all three of those and putting it in one. Does that, does that meet your need? Is that kind of what, what you're looking for?
I would need for you to say that again.
Okay. So it would be establish a plan for the Children's Fund considering Parks and Rec Strategic Plan and needs for scholarships. Does that get sort of all three of those then into one?
Yeah. Yes.
That works for me.
Yes.
Because I don't think the intent was to turn over this Children's Fund and never see it again on rec, right?
We fund a lot of, I want to continue.
Evaluating what the uses would be.
Yeah, through our grant programs, but.
But it was just signaling to Parks and Rec is, hey, here's a revenue stream. We've identified a bunch of things we want to do. Let's examine how it could be used. And you wanted particularly to call out the scholarships as one particular use.
Thank you, thank you. And then the only other edit that I see up there as our council reviews them is the grants. Explore more grant opportunities was very specific. And I just want to broaden that to be safety and environmental. And I can't see it very well, sorry. Explore grant opportunities to fund safety and environmental policies. Not just. Not just those vaping and plastic education. Because there's a lot of grants out there that we can explore.
Was it specific to the education programs?
No, it was for, for preventative, for anti-vapines, or so, such as anti-vaping and plastics, that we might get some grants, um...
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes. Question?
I have a question. What do we have in terms of dedicated grant professional help? How, how do we work on our grants? Some's internal, do we have dedicated outside, like a contractor? Cause we've had contractors in the past.
We have had contractors in the past who've written grants for us. Steve, do we have anybody at this point who's under? We don't have anybody at this point. We've definitely had a fair number of people we've worked with. Um, under, in community development, um, CDBG, we have Ashby Group. Are they still? Yeah, so under, so I think the only one, that would be probably the only group that we sort of have a, a long-term relationship with terms of grant writer would be the Ashby Group at CDBG.
Okay, and so that's for a particular?
Right, that's not just for a generic grant.
So, what I'd like to add there is develop a more robust grant option for the City of Capitol. Because I think there's a lot of areas that we could apply for grants. And I hear about, I think RTC, there's things I've heard about through them. Is that if, if we don't have a list of people we could go to that are experts in those fields, there's money on the table that we ignore.
Yeah, that's certainly true. The trick is, 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 um, grants expect you to do something. And at this point, we don't have a lot of extra bandwidth to sort of just pursue innovative and interesting things. Um, I'm not saying that we shouldn't develop more resources to it, but I just want everyone to be cognizant of the fact that, you know, chasing grants, um, doesn't usually balance your budget. You know, chasing grants can give you some great, great opportunities to do wonderful things, but i- it doesn't usually solve sort of overall budget shortfalls in terms of your core functions.
No, I'm not thinking about it in terms of solving the budget, I'm thinking about in terms of providing things for the city. Like we put grants like for Broomer, we just did that, that was through the RTC. But there's other things too, and in terms of environmental issues, that's improving the life, the lives of the city residents, uh, stuff like that. So it's just the idea that if there is money out there, and I can see it's a balance from your standpoint in terms of being the city manager, what do we have to do once we get the grant? But I'm thinking first, do we actually have a list of people that could actually be the ones we go to when we hear of an, of a, of an opportunity out there? If we don't have that list, if we don't have those relationships, we can't even make the next step, which is to try to pursue that opportunity when we think it's beneficial for Capitol. Oh, and item 18, I didn't get a check.
Okay.
Most everything on this list, I can see, you know, it's just a matter of, like the mayor said, balancing our fiscal needs with reality, I guess.
I, I concur with, with Councilmember Bertrand and where he's going with this. I, I, I think that's, well, I know that's why I brought up Exploring Grant Opportunities, Councilmember Bertrand, because we have a lot of things in place and projects that we're waiting to go up to bid on. And you are correct, that there are opportunities, and I know staff have done, has done an incredible job in, um, in exploring all those options. But I agree with you, it's, it's worth mentioning. So perhaps we can to, can tie what, uh, Councilmember Bertrand is saying into number 12. To just, to be, to just say, explore grant opportunities for public safety, CIP projects and, or, you know, policies and, and projects. I mean, again, staff is already doing, doing that, but it's worth mentioning because when we, since we know we're going to be in deficit spending, it's just worth stating this is a priority of ours, and I think that's important.
Is that, does that capture this, or?
No, I, I think you're, is going in the direction that I could easily agree with.
Okay.
I, I think we just should have the options there, so when things come up, um, environmental, there's tons of grants in that regard, um, but, you have to make the choice of what makes sense for your staff.
And that's why we sit on commission, other commissions, because they inform us of those. And it's our job to also bring those forward, which we've, we've done ourselves. So, um, no, I appreciate you expanding that.
Okay. Um, with the council's comments, uh, on record, the staff recommend that we vote on this as a general plan that the council has come up with, that staff uses as guidance in their creation of a, of a potential budget, or are you looking for us to unanimously agree on every one of these items?
No, no, I, I think that the thing to do at this point is kind of like what we did last time. Probably putting some of the new, the new projects, or the projects that would need significant funding, kind of in the bucket, when we see how much funding we have available for new projects. And then do our best to work in these other things. If there's general agreement, if there's something in here that you think is just, we shouldn't be working on, that would be helpful to hear. Otherwise, I think, I think a lot of these things are things that we can, you know, try to work in, if the council would like us to do that, into the work plan for next year. And then you'll get a chance to see how it sort of flows as one document in the budget, uh, when it shows up in the budget.
All right, uh, with that being said, we have all the council's comments in. Does anyone, uh, we are willing to entertain a motion if anyone has one to be made?
Actually, public comment.
Oh, my apologies, thank you. Didn't we already go to public comment on this? Isn't that why we're, isn't that why we're at council comments now?
We might have missed it, but we still should have.
I don't think so.
I don't remember.
We didn't?
No.
I could be wrong.
We were so excited about jumping to our ideas. Went for it.
Hmm, interesting, okay, we'll go to public comment. Is there any member of the public that would like to address the council on this item? Seeing none, we will wait for a remote comment on this item? All right.
I think you're good.
Okay, did we receive any remote public comment on this item?
We did not.
Okay, we will bring it back to council, uh, given our deliberation, if there is a motion.
Motion to accept this list from city council members, including those remote, and, um, take it to the city staff to prioritize and group them accordingly, and bring them back to city council for a final review and decision.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Um, I'd like to just, Jamie, if you can be sure to edit the feminine hygiene one for all. Like I mentioned, it was, it's currently at, in the police department and in your offices, but I, I want to see it in the bathrooms at City Hall and what that would look like. Thank you.
And identify costs for that in the budget.
I didn't say that.
Okay.
With that addition, so moved.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Can we have a roll call vote, please? Councilmember Story?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Bertrand?
Aye.
Botorff?
Aye.
And Mayor Peterson?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Um, with the addition of the two items that were pulled from consent and the vote to add, uh, the local health emergency item to the agenda, we ended it with a total of eight items on tonight's agenda, we've only gone through three, so we have five yet to go. Uh, and we're about two and a half, two hours and 15 minutes in, so I'm going to ask for a quick three-minute break, and we will return in three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
...back to the dais. Councilmember Botorff, are you still on the line? Can we ensure that Councilmember Botorff is still on the line?
We can do that.
Thank you very much. As we move forward, for the sake of moving tonight's agendas along, agenda along, I'd like to recommend that we take some items out of order and go first with the most, potentially the most urgent, which is the local health emergency declaration, which would have been item 8H, and then the two items that were on consent that have been pulled, items 7A and 7B, which are now 8F and 8G. And from there, go back to our original agenda, community survey contract and first reading of ordinance. City Attorney, do I need a vote or a consensus on that?
No.
Okay. All right, we're going to move forward with item 8H then, the local health emergency declaration. Counsel, this was brought up at the beginning. Councilwoman Brooks brought it to our attention. As we know, this is ongoing throughout our county and throughout the state. So, Councilwoman Brooks, or Vice Mayor Brooks, excuse me, was there any particular language that you wanted to use in your request for this? There we go.
We've prepared something.
All right.
During the break.
During the break?
My gosh. I think the city manager and I have done the deep dive into the coronavirus information, not the actual virus.
Good.
In the last few days, I think a lot of staff is learning a lot of information. It's all developing very quickly. I can tell you that multiple cities have declared an emergency. Some, the city manager has declared an emergency. Some, the city council has declared an emergency. So what we've prepared for you here is a resolution proclaiming an emergency that would allow the council to proclaim an emergency. Doing so would essentially authorize, would authorize the city manager, or the city manager to become the director of emergency services, which essentially authorizes him to be in charge during an emergency. It will also make the city eligible to apply for funds from FEMA or the Office of Emergency Services, should you expend funds on the emergency and should funds become available.
Great, thank you. Is there any questions from council to staff on this item? Yes.
So, for our city residents, could that also correspond to, like, helping people that have medical problems and, you know, getting, I don't know, ambulances to them or, you know, doing some kind of care on that level because they may be in an emergency situation?
So, as I mentioned at the beginning on the presentation about the coronavirus, the county health department is our health department. So their declaration actually already applies to our residents.
Okay.
Where, at the end of the day, funding and assistance is going to come on this, I think is anyone's guess. You know, I was listening today to some news reports talking about repealing some sort of payroll taxes. I've heard somebody else talking about just sort of a stipend to every American.
Right.
Whether or not there's going to be, you know, free coverage, Medicare for All for a couple of months, I don't know. So I think it's impossible for me to predict residents today will already have the benefits that they would have gotten regardless of whether we make this declaration.
Well, one first thing that occurs to me is our police department. So, and ride-alongs that I've occurred, been on, I've actually gone to a ride-along where there's a dead individual there, you know, who had died natural causes. But if the policeman is called and they attend, you know, a particular place or something like that, and they see something that might require them to have some protective gear, was it PPE or something like that, you know, maybe we should provide for that. I know they have certain things now, like gloves and such, but I think this requires a little bit more than that. Chief?
Thank you for the question. I'll try and answer it as best I can. Starting with the declaration of emergency is not necessary to acquire that PPE, that personal protective gear for officers or emergency personnel. In fact, as part of the county Office of Emergency Services, the phase that they're in now in overseeing the operational area, which is the entire county, they have already provided the capabilities for us to request, and we've already received additional gear such as that so that our officers are masked up appropriately when they need to.
Okay.
And I think that was your question, is that correct?
Right, well, that's my concern. That's the first thing I could think of, is that you're usually the first ones on the scene, and who knows what's going to be there, and have that equipment available for you is important, I think.
That's correct. Those mechanisms are in place. They received the authorization and the equipment directly from the state as we're operating, or as we're responding in this designated operational area. The county declared the local or the countywide emergency some time ago, a week ago or so. That allowed for them to reach out to the state to acquire support and funding resources for this type of equipment that has already been delivered to the agencies who are requesting it.
Do we have, what I've seen used in, like, airports and stuff, ways to measure people's temperature, it's a sort of a thermal thing, which you just hold in front of someone's forehead, like we have a lot of activities that maybe something like that could be useful?
And you're asking about screening equipment. I would assume that AMR and central fire and the agencies that support the medical
They would have that, okay.
response, that they probably have that equipment, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Any additional questions from council? Seeing none, we'll bring it to public comment. Is there any member of the public that would like to address the council on this item? Seeing none, we'll take it to remote public comment. Have we received any remote public comment on this item?
Give it another 10 seconds?
You got it.
Nope.
All right. With that public comment on this item is closed, we'll bring it back for council deliberation.
I so move to adopt the emergency declaration.
I'll second.
We have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Story?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Bertrand?
Aye.
Botorff?
I would like to vote, but I can't see the screen, so I have no idea what we're voting on.
Oh, it's a, it's a resolution to declare a public health emergency in the city of Capitola. Would...
Is it possible for, is it possible for the person running the TV to focus on the screen first? Thank you.
Oh, look at that, fantastic.
So we'll skip the recitals.
Thank you, Benjamin Thompson, our technician for the evening. We're giving Councilmember Botorff a moment to review what's on the screen.
Thank you, aye.
All right.
And Mayor Peterson.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all. Okay, so we're going to go to item, what is now 8F, formerly item 7A from the consent agenda.
Mayor, council, I have a quick handout I'd like to bring up to you.
Sure. And this is an update of emergency storm drain repairs.
Thank you.
I think...
So this item is an update on the storm drain repairs off of Chittenden Lane, and for the benefit of Councilman Botorff, I'm just going to read the memo, it's pretty short here. This member provides an update on the updated information regarding the Chittenden Lane emergency storm drain repairs. The work to replace the failed storm drain off Chittenden Lane was completed Wednesday, March 11th, 2020. The contractor, Anderson Pacific Engineering Construction, was able to slipline a new pipe from Chittenden Lane to a V ditch located in Brookvale Terrace as planned. No unexpected conditions were encountered, and is anticipated that the cost for the repairs will be within the $55,000 to $65,000 estimate approved by the council. It'll take approximately four, it will take the contractor four to six weeks to reconcile all their costs and provide a final billing. As no additional work is required, an emergency declaration is no longer required. The cost share agreement with the Santa Cruz County Flood Control and Water Conservation District, Zone 5, remains scheduled for consideration by their board on March 24th. So based on this, on the above information, is now recommended that the city council accept this updated report on the project and direct staff to return with a closing report once the final costs are known, and Zone 5 has acted on the agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions of staff? Councilmember Bertrand.
Yeah, I have a question. So, this pipeline wasn't known or detailed in Zone 5 before, is that correct?
It's in their master plan and on their GIS.
It is?
Yes.
Okay, great. I just want to make sure that it's identified as such.
Yes.
Additional questions? Councilmember Botorff, any questions?
No questions.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. We'll now bring this item to public comment. Is there any member of the public that would like to address the council on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to, for remote public comment. If there's any member of the public that would like to provide comment remotely, now would be the time. We will take a moment.
I think you're good.
And the moment has passed. All right, public comment is now closed for that item. We will bring it back to council for deliberation and a vote.
Remove staff recommendation.
Second.
We have motion and a second. We have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Story?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Bertrand?
Aye.
Botorff?
Aye.
And Mayor Peterson?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously, thank you. We're going to move now to item, what is now 8G, was previously consent, item 7B, regarding an update on emergency repairs to the wharf. Can we get a...
Short?
Hi, yes, thank you. Still here, thank you.
Short discussion. The council had previously adopted a resolution declaring emergency on the wharf due to the failure of two piles underneath the hoist. When we awarded the, we, subsequent to that, we have ordered the new piles and they are in delivery. We knew when we declared the emergency it would be a four to six week, or six to eight week delivery time on those piles. They have been ordered, we are waiting for them. Subsequent to the declaration of the emergency, though, it has been determined that there is another missing pile that may be necessary to replace in order to get the equipment out to make the repairs to the, on the hoist. We are working with the contractor to identify what additional costs there may be, and if it is, we will return prior to the work beginning with a change order to that contract.
Great, thank you. Questions of staff? Nope, hearing none. We will bring this to public comment. Is there any member of the public that would like to address the council on this item? Can we get the timer for three minutes, please?
Thank you. My, I guess my, I'm looking for a better understanding in regards to the third piling that broke previously on the western side of the wharf. How does that piling relate to the two that broke on January 1st, causing the city to declare the emergency?
If I, if I may, I believe we need to do the full, if that's the end of your public comment, that's fine, but we can't have back and forth during public comment. So if you'd like to take your three minutes, and then we can, as council, ask staff to address your questions.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I just want to be clear that the city is not including work from the wharf rehabilitation project that is expected to take place next year sometime, including that work, any of that work into this emergency declaration. I do totally understand what the fourth piling now is necessary to drive the crane out to the wharf, but I'm just still unsure about the third, the third piling. That's my comments for this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Any additional members of the public that would like to address the council? Seeing none, any remote public comment on this item?
It looks like, oh, not, yes, we did.
Oh, we did.
All right. So we did get public comment here.
Should we broadcast this to the screen?
Yes, we did.
Okay.
It's one item, and I will have it read aloud.
I appreciate the hard work of our public works director and care for the wharf, sent from my Verizon LG smartphone.
All right. Kind of love that.
Wow. It worked.
All right. Thank you. Any additional remote public comment?
That's it.
All right, we will, we will now close public comment on that item, and we'll bring it back to staff. And I will start by asking our public works director to provide any information he can regarding the third piling and the additional pilings that we would be bringing the driver out for.
So, at the time we declared the emergency, there is a third pile that had failed several years ago, I don't know the exact date. It is currently, the wharf in that area is currently supported by a beam on top of the wharf, and it seemed advantageous to us to replace that pile at this time with the new pile. It can be done as part of the rehabilitation project, it was more of a timing, we have the equipment available to do that work at that time.
Does that in any way negate the emergency declaration, or is there any reason that our emergency declaration would not be allowed to include work that we would have otherwise done in the future?
It should not include work that we, well, if it is, regardless of whether we were planning to do it in the future, if it is an emergency now, regardless of whether it was planned at a future date, it could be included in the emergency declaration.
Okay, thank you. Any additional questions of our public works director while he's here? No, Councilmember Botorff, any additional questions?
No questions.
Okay. We have had public comment, remote public comment, we're going to bring it back to the council for discussion and action. Do we have any discussion, or if not, we will entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Could we have one minute, please? Apologies, yes, sure.
Other comment?
While we're waiting, I will remind us all to wash your hands for 20 seconds, which, if you're a, oh, and also the census, we'll talk about that also important, census items went out, got mine in the mail today.
Okay. Okay, we'll hear the motion and we may interrupt.
Fair enough.
Because I'm...
Business as usual.
I'm reading this recommended action, and it's sort of a guidance, so my recommended, my...
Hold on, we got, hold on, I want to make sure staff hears motions so that we...
I think, I think I can provide a little bit of direction. I think that some of the public testimony has presented a pretty compelling case about that third piling, and whether or not it really should be part of this emergency repair or part of the overall wharf renovation project.
Okay.
I think obviously the two pilings underneath the hoist have to be fixed, it's in danger of falling into the ocean, and we don't have an operational wharf or opportunity for people to save people to get in and out of the water. So, I think my recommendation would be at this time that the third piling will off for the overall wharf renovation project. I want to be clear with the council, though, that there is potentially actually a third piling that's going to have to be replaced in a different location to get the pile driver out there along the, we call it the trestle. So, we may end up driving three piles, it wasn't the three that we thought, but, but I think that the points raised about the third piling that was near the Cliff House, Wharf House Restaurant, deserve some consideration.
So, is that a question? Is that going to be part of the emergency?
So, so that's what I think council, or city manager, Goldstein, is saying, which is that, if I have this correct, you are recommending that the council continue the emergency, the resolution number 40166, with the exception of the third piling.
That's correct.
And that you not continue the declaration as to the third piling. We will remove that from the emergency resolution and fix that in another way.
Ask a question about that?
Sure.
I heard the city manager also mentioned that the third piling may be needed in another location for the purposes of bringing the crane out to do the driving. So, I mean, I just, in that situation, wouldn't it be necessary to have the third piling?
So, I'm sorry if I wasn't clear.
Second, third pile.
Our original resolution talked about two pilings under the hoist and then a third one near the Wharf House Restaurant. I think that some of the testimony suggests, and I think that there's some merit to it, that probably the third piling near the Wharf House Restaurant should be taken out at this time. What I also was alerting the council to was in order to repair the two failed ones by the hoist, there is actually a third one that's on the trestle that we believe is going to need to be replaced anyway to get the...
Correct.
And so, we believe the third piling will still be used, just not as described in the original resolution.
Okay, well, that, that was just the clarification and not just identified as the third piling won't be installed, but it may need to be installed on an emergency basis in another location.
And if it does need to be installed in an emergency basis on another location, we will bring that back to you.
That will come back to us.
But for now, the action that we are recommending the council take is to determine that all the hazards related to the failed wharf pilings as detailed in resolution number 40166, adopted by council on February 13th, 2020, with the exception of the third piling near the Wharf House, have not, have not been eliminated, and that there is need to continue action.
Okay. Is it going to cause any significant delay if it comes back to us that the third piling is needed, or...
No, we have, I believe, two more council meetings before we receive the piles anyway, so we will bring that back right away.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, so I'll make the recommendation, excuse me, I'll make the motion as stated by our city attorney. So basically, to add to that, we'll accept this update and the elimination of the third piling, and that's basically there, okay.
That's a motion?
Yes.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Story?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Bertrand?
Aye.
Botorff?
Aye.
And Mayor Peterson?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Okay, we're going to return to our normal agenda items. We are on item 8D, consider a community survey contract.
Council mayor, this item is on your agenda to consider a contract to do some polling in advance of the election coming up in November. As we've talked about earlier this evening, during last year's budget process, we talked about working with the finance advisory committee to potential, identify potential revenue measures. The finance advisory committee and staff have focused on a utility users tax for a couple of reasons. Most specifically because the city, as you're well aware, is heavily reliant on highly cyclical forms of funding, specifically sales tax and hotel tax, and trying to find complementary revenue sources that are more stable is probably in the city's best interest. After four different meetings with the finance advisory committee, they ultimately recommend considering placing a UUT on the November ballot after conducting a community survey to get feedback. The finance advisory committee has more recently asked a bit about an entertainment or an admissions tax, and I have a little bit of information I can share with you that tonight, and I think that that item is planning to go back to the finance advisory committee at their next meeting. Utility users tax, all the other cities in the county have UUTs. The range statewide is usually between 1 and 11%. Tax can apply to nearly any utility bill within a city. A 5% utility users tax in Capitola, since we don't have access to everybody's bills, we have to estimate what that would generate, but staff estimates a UUT in electricity, gas, water and garbage would generate approximately $1.2 million a year. The finance advisory committee actually recommended a city consider a very short UUT of just four years to help with the, which would be between 20 and 24, I guess, to help offset the revenue shortfalls associated with mall redevelopment. Entertainment or admissions taxes, only 10 cities statewide have admissions taxes. The, most of the cities that do, not all, but most of them have a large sporting or amusement venues. Santa Cruz has a 5% admissions tax, charged on amusement parks, movies, bowling, concerts. There's actually a long list of things that they charge it on. It generates a fair amount of revenue for Santa Cruz, it's over $2 million a year. They actually generate... For Santa Cruz, it's over $2 million a year. They actually generate the most, either the most or the second most of any city in the state with admissions tax. Capital has very few venues that would be subject to admissions tax at this point. Probably the most obvious one that would be would be the Cinelux at Kings Plaza. And the FAC has asked to review admissions tax at their next meeting. So the proposed contract was with Gene Bregman and Associates. They've conducted many of our recent, most of our recent polls. They have all of our data, which make, make using them really expeditious in terms of comparing how our numbers track over time. Proposing a contract that wouldn't exceed $14,000 would survey approximately 150 to 175 likely voters. We have to be employing some different mechanisms than in the past where it was just phones because it is such a challenge to get people to actually answer identified phone calls now when they call their cells, cell phones. The contract as proposed could cover asking questions. We would ask the baseline questions we always ask about performance of the government. And there's room in here to ask several questions about a UUT or an admissions tax or any other item the council would like to put on the ballot. I would appreciate feedback at this time if we want to proceed with this measure, this contract, about what items we would pull. Some of the things we would want to pull is if we were considering more than just one tax is, what is the combination of them do to each other? In other words, do people choose one over another? Is there an amount that people seem to, where support would drop off? Are there uses that council, the community would like to see for a tax? Is there a term? You know, the FAC proposed a four-year term for a UUT. Is that the right term? Would we want to pull it at four years, five years, ten years? Pull it at different levels to see where the support line. Quickly, the process. We would get the poll results. We would be presenting them aiming for the first meeting in June. Would give us then through June and July to make a determination about any items that we would place on the ballot. And the final day to put something on the ballot would be August 7th. So with that, the recommendation is to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Bregman and Associates in an amount not to exceed $14,000 and to give staff direction regarding potential measures to include in the poll. And with that, I'm available to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? Councilmember Batorf on the phone, any questions?
No questions.
Okay. With that, we'll bring this to public comment. Is there any member of the public that would like to address the council? Seeing none, we will wait briefly for any remote testimony to come in. City manager will let us know if we've received any remote public comment on this item.
I think we're good.
All right. Public comment is closed and we will bring it back to council for deliberation and a vote. Council comments. Let's start with Councilmember Batorf on the phone.
Thank you. I have no problem in entering into a contract with Gene Bregman. My concern at this point is I'm willing to consider a utility tax. I'm not in favor of an entertainment tax, but I would like to, to bring up the possibility of extending Measure F into perpetuity to create an ocean protection fund for numerous things, but, but because we're not prepared to discuss this, I would encourage the city manager to bring this back for the next council meeting for a full discussion about the merits of extending Measure F into perpetuity.
Thank you. Quick question. Is there any time sensitivity to this matter needing to be addressed tonight?
Uh, not yet.
Okay.
Not yet. I think we could authorize it. The next meeting would be just fine. At some point, obviously, though, we need to get the results back in June. One thing you could consider is we do have room for, to poll on two, two different taxes if you want. We could get the poll results and then you could have the discussion about what you, with the poll results in hand and have the discussion about what you'd like to put on the ballot. That's also an option as well.
Would there also be an option to approve, for example, a polling contract about the utility tax and then have a future agenda item to consider a poll for either?
No, these would be one.
This needs to be one motion with, because it's a contract with one agency. Is that my understanding?
Functionally, you go through the questions and you say, would you consider supporting a utility users tax for two years, for five years, for 10 years? What about if the city was also considering a extension of Measure F? Would you, does that change your opinion? So you kind of want to balance them off each other.
Okay, thank you.
Does that impact the contract amount?
So the contract amount, I don't know if you noticed, but in the attachment, basically, it's, it's, it's how long your survey is, is the actual amount. And so if I remember correctly, I talked to Gene and the $14,000 got us two tax measures that we could poll on. If we were just polling on one, we could probably get it down a little bit lower, get it probably closer to 12.
Additional comments?
Um, yeah. I, I think where Councilmember Batorf is going with looking at that extension of Measure F is a, is a really great idea. The only other addition that instead of doing four years for the utility tax, when I'm thinking about the mall, we've constantly have said it's five year, it's a kind of like this five-year plan. And earlier it mentions, you know, that there are some, there was some thought behind that, that the FAC. And so I would be interested in, in looking and polling for five years instead of four years for the tax.
Yeah, we would, we would pick a couple of different combos.
We would. Okay, so.
So we wouldn't just pull exactly what the FAC did. We would test it at four years and 5%, four years and 3%.
I see.
Maybe a longer term, five years, seven years, a couple, a couple of different options. And I would work with Gene. He, you know, he does this for a living and helps, helps advise.
Okay, you were just seeking, earlier you were asking for direction for some of those, some of that sort of stuff.
Yeah, I think really the, the key would be what are the measures?
Okay.
And I guess to, to some degree, understanding that what we're talking about with the UUT is, is a relatively short time period thing.
So can I add that it could, you know, four years, five years, or forever? You know, like putting that on?
Ask the question.
Right, let's ask that question and then I would agree with Councilmember Batorf to include in the poll the extension of Measure F forever. What was the term, perpetuity?
Instead of the entertainment?
And, oh, yeah. Let's get that we have. Maybe that after a mall is built, we can examine that one.
Council comments? No comments? No comments? Was that a motion or just a suggestion?
Sure, I'll make a motion with what I just said. Do you want me to repeat it? To enter a contract with, that does not exceed $14,000 to include both the utility tax and the extension of Measure F into perpetuity.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmembers Story?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Bertrand?
Aye.
Badorf?
Aye.
And Mayor Peterson?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And finally, we're going to go to item 8E, First Reading of an Ordinance Amending Chapter 17.8 Signs.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Peterson. Again, I'm bringing you a first reading of the sign ordinance for the second time. Back on February 27th, this was introduced to the city council. Staff brought forth changes recommended by the city attorney based on court rulings regarding freedom of speech and content. During the meeting, at the conclusion of the meeting, the council asked staff to research the 90-day election period definition and where the source of that came from. What we have learned, and the direction from city council at that time was to return with an updated first draft if 120 days could be allowed. Otherwise, move forward with the second draft of the, the second reading, sorry. So the source of the 90 days comes from the State Outdoor Advertising Act as it regulates temporary political signs and their placement no sooner than 90 days prior to a scheduled election. It must be removed 10 days after. It also talks about the placement of such signs in respect to the right-of-way of any highway within 660 feet of the edge of and visible from the right-of-way of a landscaped freeway. The takeaway on this is that the state law does not prohibit a city from allowing political signs to be displayed longer so long as they are not displayed close, close to the right-of-way for a highway or a freeway. So it would still have to comply with this standard in those locations. Staff went ahead and redlined the ordinance and modified it. As shown in the slide, the draft ordinance has been modified to define an election period to begin 120 days before and ending one day after an election and to allow political signs without permits during an election period located outside the public street path or right-of-way except to the extent such signs are prohibited by state and federal law. So it would be protected under that caveat of except to the extent such signs are prohibited by state or federal law. With that, staff is recommending the city council pass the first reading of the proposed ordinance amending Title 17 to align with recent legal decisions regarding non-commercial signs amended from the introduction to allow 120 days for political signs and waive the reading of the text.
Questions for staff? I have a quick question. The election period ending one day after the election, and, and it's been several years now, but I seem to remember that after the election was over, we had like seven days or 14 days or something to take our signs down before the FPPC was going to fine us. So does this mean now that we have literally 24 hours until after our election is done to make sure no one has our signs up anymore?
That is how it's drafted, is one day after. Originally, we had 10? Oh, no, we had one in the original, the original.
The original version was day of.
Yeah, was, so we modified it to the day after.
It's always been one day.
But the state highway code is 10 days after.
Okay. Okay, so essentially the city could penalize if your sign is up after a day, but the state will give you 10. Okay. Okay, thank you. Any additional questions? No. Okay, we'll bring this to public comment. Any member of the public that would like to address the council on this item? Seeing none in the room at all, we will go to remote comment.
It looks like we've received one comment remotely here and we will read it aloud?
Well done, council and staff. The new public comment option works well. Good night and remember to wash your hands. Sent from my Iphani. Iphani.
Iphani. Thank you, thank you from that concerned member of the public. Both of those concerned members of the public, now that I notice. Appreciate it. Okay, so we've had, we'll, we'll bring it back to council for consideration and a vote.
Can I make a motion?
Absolutely.
Okay. I'd like to move the recommended action to pass the first reading of the proposed ordinance amending Title 17 to align with recent legal decisions regarding non-commercial signs amended from introduction to allow 120 days for political signs and waive reading of the text.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second?
I have some comments.
Oh, yes, all right. We consider deliberation.
Um, yeah, so I, I don't think that, I think that passing additional extra days and changing the 10-day to one day, I, I believe it causes some confusion. There's a, you know, we would be the only city in our county doing that, that I know of, and it causes a lot of confusion. I think it will create an additional, like additional sign pollution by being able to, to keep your signs up for longer. Where, at, at first, when I looked at this, I was just thinking specifically for the, for city council, but there is state, you know, people who run for state office and county supervisor, and to have different roles doesn't really make sense to me. So for that, I won't be approving the, the ordinance tonight.
Thank you. Any additional comments? No? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please?
Councilmembers Story?
Aye.
Brooks?
No.
Bertrand?
Aye.
Badorf?
Aye.
And Mayor Peterson?
Aye. Motion carries four to one. Thank you very much. That brings us to the end of our agenda. I would like to thank our technician tonight, Benjamin Thompson, for being here and recording our meeting. Thank you all very much for being here. Take care of yourselves and with respect for health and social distancing, take care of each other. Good night.
Wash your hands.
Wash your hands.